This meeting of Tuesday, April 14th, we are returning to a regular session and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
And to the great public for which it stands, we're one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Spanish translation available.
Vivian Rodriguez is with us tonight to translate.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do have headsets available for the hearing impaired, so please just let us know if you need those. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we do have an introduction to, a couple of introductions tonight. We have with us Monroe Principal Brent Millholland and some of his students to tell us about their school's science fair. Brent, would you please come up to the microphone at the podium?
Good evening, board members and district staff. I'm happy to be here to present some of the, some of the handiwork of our annual science fair, which is a 25-year tradition at Monroe. So it's been around a long time. We generally get about 200 projects like this that we, that kids talk about in their classroom and then they, we set them up in the cafeteria for one night for the science fair. And I know Kate Parker was able to make it and so she can testify that the room is full with projects. And it's an exciting night because a lot of them, you can, you know, touch and feel and kind of operate. And so it's a lot of fun for the kids. The parents are just as enthusiastic as the kids to see what has been produced. The K through, through grade three can participate if they want to. And sometimes the classes do projects, but then fourth through sixth grade, they're required to have a project and it's part of their science grade. And so it's a great opportunity for kind of hands-on science. At the science fair, we don't judge the projects. They're there for everybody to enjoy and for everybody to see and be proud of their handiwork without handing out blue ribbons or anything like that. The four, the, actually, I'm hoping that one more shows up. But the ones that I chose to come here tonight are representative of the good science at the grade level that, that they've produced them. And so we encourage use of the scientific method and they come up with great ideas. So what I'd like to do is bring up Alyssa Aguilar, who will tell us about her project. Come on up, Alyssa.
My project is about how energy drinks affect the pulse. It's with Monster, Rockstar, and water. My hypothesis for this project was that the Rockstar would be more effective because it had more sugar than the Monster and water. And my conclusion was that my hypothesis was correct. The Rockstar was more effective for being, having more sugar. And the Monster came in second. And the water, of course, came in last because it has no ingredients. The procedure, the materials you need is the Rockstar drink, the Monster, water, a timer, and anything that tells time, and a cup. The procedures are you'll need about three testers. And you have to give at least one your test, one of your testers, a drink first, let them drink it, wait a couple minutes, take their pulse, and write it down under the category that isn't, that it is chosen under. And my, and then after you do that, you do it for a couple, like, four weeks, and write it down, and you'll have your results.
Thank you. And Alyssa's in the fifth grade. And now I'd like to bring forward Anne Burnett, who's in the second grade. And so she did this, she was not required to do it, but she chose a project. Actually, she chose two projects and we brought one of them tonight.
My project is an experiment. Eggs float. And I thought that the eggs floated in the saltwater because my mom read about it. And, and I, my procedure was I put water in two glasses, then I put some salt into one glass, then I carefully lowered an egg into each glass. And, and eggs floated in saltwater and the eggs synced in fresh water because the saltwater is denser than the fresh water.
So when I, when I heard her gave this, give this explanation, I, I caught one word in there and it was, it was the, that some of the water was more dense. And I said, do you know what that means?
It means like it's heavier.
So she had it. She had the concept there. So very good, Anne. Thank you very much. She also did a very interesting project, another project. She did two for the science fair on locusts. So, very interesting also. All right. And Dane Peterson, fifth grader. Here we go.
I did, is a dog's mouth cleaner than a human's? And my hypothesis was, that I, I thought that their dog's mouth would be cleaner because they have like a less varied diet and the acid in their mouth that cleans their mouth. Yeah. And, um, I swabbed my friends' and their dog's mouth and put the, put it in the petri dishes with the agar. And then I wrote down the results of like, the germs. And then, yeah, and then my conclusion was that the colonies of dog bacteria increased more rapidly, rapidly in the same amount of time than the colonies of human bacteria. And the dog cheek swabs contain a greater variety of bacterial species than the human cheek swabs as signified by the multiple colors and different shapes and sizes of the colonies. Yeah. And it's right there.
Good job. I was, I was relieved to hear that my mouth is cleaner than a dog's, although I wasn't part of the experiment. So I'm just, I'm really pleased at the ingenuity that kids come up with.
I'm up with, you know, coming up with these projects. And it's a lot of fun every year to see them. And like I said, kids have been doing it for 25 years and it's just one of those tried and true things at Monroe. Are there any questions?
Board members, I want to say thank you, Mr. Millholland, for bringing these. And to our budding young scientists, I did get to go to the science fair that night and I saw how packed out it was. And it was so fun. And it was fun going to the library for the book sale also. But it's great to see our students as young as second grade even learning the scientific method. So, thank you. And you'll be able to see your experiments on TV on Saturday, Channel 18, 5 o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, this is a perfect segue to the strong showing that our secondary students made at Friday's Santa Barbara County Science Fair. And we'll be posting those results on the web likely tomorrow. I would also like to introduce Rosa Lazarvitz. Rosa, would you please come up to the podium? And I'll, I'll talk about you, but I'd like you just to say hi to the board. Rosa's been newly hired as a resource parent. Rosa was born and raised in Panama City, the one in Panama. She has a bachelor's degree in child development and is currently completing her master's in family therapy. During her career, Rosa has served infants and children with special needs and their families, first with the Braille Institute, and later with the Early Start Program. She's worked as a, an early interventionist for children with special needs, served as an instructional assistant, and as a child development specialist, providing therapeutic interventions for children with special needs and community resources for their families. Rosa is working up to 18 hours per week and her office is located at Santa Barbara Junior High. Rosa, welcome to the district.
Thank you very much. Glad to be part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa. And the superintendent's report?
Well, I'd like to start tonight's report by giving a very brief report on what we're doing in response to the state reductions in funding. Now, we have a, an agenda item on tonight's meeting, but let me first of all say that following last year's $4.1 million in budget cuts due to unprecedented cuts in state funding, we must again work to decrease our district budget, our operating budget in alignment with fewer educational funding, with lower educational funding levels. We depend on state funding and as we all know, the state budget crisis has grown to unimaginable proportions that require us to cut another $3 million from our $120 million operating budget. And in the past, I've given the board information on cuts that other districts are making that far exceed our cuts. They're looking at $6 million, $8 million, $13 million for districts just our size. Just as we did last year and in previous years, we'll be working to make cuts that are as far away from the classroom as possible. But it's particularly difficult to find cuts that do not affect people since we have 84% of our budget going to salaries and benefits, especially after a number of years of making cuts and, in cutting other services. We put a freeze on spending this year again. We've gathered feedback from stakeholders on how to enhance revenue and save on our expenses. And we continue to keep the number of district administrators low. We sent out fewer layoff notices this year than we did last year. And I know that there are various numbers that have come out in the press on the number of layoff notices. This year, we sent out 65 layoff notices for 65 teaching positions. And we will be deciding over the next two weeks how many of the 65 notices will be acted upon. These are notices. They're not the final layoffs. We've also alerted our substitute teachers that permanent teachers on leave or on partial assignments may be returning to their future positions. And this in no way denigrates the value of our substitute teachers. And we rely on substitutes every year. Budget cuts are a problem that we're all in together. And we have every confidence, I have every confidence, that the board will move forward and make decisions that will have the least impact on, on classrooms and students. We will continue to provide a sound financial base so that we can focus on instructional effectiveness and learning. We do have our budget fax flyers on the side table, and I know the board members have received this as well. And that explains a lot more than I can say in just a few moments about the budget. It has a section on basic aid and what value that is to our district as well. The board and I have received many emails from parents, staff, and members of the, of the public concerned about district budget cuts, far more than, than I could ever respond to. And board members, maybe I'm speaking for you as well. I feel badly that I'm not responding to everyone, but there simply isn't time. I do thank everyone for, for expressing their concerns, their thoughts, and their ideas in the emails. People took a lot of time to do that and we received a lot of very thoughtful messages. Later in tonight's agenda, we'll have a list that reflects ideas from people across the district about possible cuts. This is not a list of recommended cuts. This is a, a collection of all of the possible cuts that we have heard suggested here in our community. Let me move on, though. We're in that season of the year when star testing has started for most of our schools and continues through the first week in, first part of May. Our Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee for Parcel Tax Measures H 2008 and I 2008 will begin meeting next week. During these trying financial times, we are very grateful to the community for supporting programs in our schools. And I want to assure you that we will honor our commitment to the community, that we will use the parcel tax money only to add additional services and in no way to supplant budget cuts. The sixth grade students, the board will notice the, the wall to the back of the room here. The sixth grade students at McKinley Elementary School created oil pastel self-portraits, a few of which are on display at the back of the room. The artwork was inspired by the Mexican artist Frida Kahlo. And thank you, students and art teacher Angela Lang. Angela's not with us here tonight, but we'll get word to her. Take a look at this. This is very well done. And just a reminder that we're still advertising for the position of Executive Director for Special Education. And the two director positions, the Executive Director position closes at the end of this month. So we have those advertisements out there. We've advertised nationally. And we hope to, well, actually, we're seeing a good response to date. Sadly, during spring break, former Santa Barbara High School student Adriana Bakken and Dos Pueblos freshman Lindsay Rose lost their lives in tragic accidents. Coincidentally, both young women were scholar athletes and their passing is mourned by our school community. Upcoming events. Board members, you have a notice on upcoming events. We have a number of theater performances that are underway. Tomorrow, La Cumbre Junior High will kick off Copacabana. On Friday, Galita Valley will begin performances of Pirates of Penzance. Santa Barbara High will perform Footloose starting April 24. And San Marcos will present Man of La Mancha beginning April 30. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know all board members, it was really hard to get those emails over the spring break about the two, this current student, the former student. So that was very sad news. Do we have a student report from Santa Barbara High School? Looks like we do.
We certainly do. Do I know who it is? I certainly don't. I'm sorry. You'll have to introduce yourselves.
I'm Lucy Cordova, the ASB president.
And my name is Ellie Iverson and I'm ASB Vice President.
Okay. And coming up at our school, we have MORP, our, April 17th, this Friday at school, it's our techno dance in the hallways. And this is the one dance that we put no money into and we charge five bucks for tickets. So it's the one dance we can make profit out of. And we also have prom coming up, May 9. And we're fundraising for that as much as we can. Tickets did go up compared to last year. They're $70 per guest and student. And junior fundraiser.
Um, this year at Santa Barbara High School, we're trying something new. I'm a junior at the high school. And we're trying to start something so that we start preparing for our senior year before we actually get there. So on April 24th, we're having a junior fundraiser. It's kind of a stay-at-school lunch where we're going to be providing, we're going to have catering come in and have food there. And we're going to have music playing. We're going to have performances. Hopefully, we're going to have some carnival activities that people can play with. So this is just an attempt for us to start building up our account before we actually get to the senior year so that we don't have to struggle with our prom, with our senior activities. So that's something that's coming up on April 24th.
And starting tomorrow, our class elections campaigning starts. So for all classmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, so soon we will know who our new president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer will be.
Um, another thing that's going on is the Green Club at Santa Barbara High School is starting a Green Week campaign next week. It's going to start April 20th and go on throughout the week. During the week, they've set up an assortment of events, many of which include carpooling raffles. So if you carpool the school, you get a raffle ticket. And if you win the raffle, then you get one of the best parking spots in the parking lot. Some other things they're doing, they're composting events on the front lawn. They're going to have recycling events. So just to raise awareness about recycling and how important it is. They're also going to have an e-waste day. So these are just several things that our school is doing to become more environmentally friendly.
And our virtual enterprise class at school is having a banquet fundraiser in Hope Ranch, May 30. And they hope to sell desserts and dinner to raise money for themselves. And they also have VITA, which is a student-run program who dedicates their time after school to help families, low-income families do their taxes during the season. So they've done, they've been doing that for the past weeks. And last thing, all 22 varsity teams at Santa Barbara High School have a 3.0 GPA and that's with non-weighted grades. So we congratulate them for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, board members.
I, I hope you young ladies read the news press and pass the word around. In today's paper, the assistance league has 600 prom dresses that you can choose from. And that offsets that increase in price very easily. So take advantage of those 600 free prom dresses.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to item C2, the announcement of closed-session action. We do have two items to report out. On item B1, it was moved by Deacon and seconded by Heron to approve the settlement agreement for case number N 2008100746. And that passed 3-0 with Noel recusing himself and Cordero absent. And then on item B4, it was moved by Cordero and seconded by Deacon to approve the Casey waivers for graduation for students with disabilities. And that passed 5-0. C3, public comments. This is the time for the public to speak on items that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the board but are not on the conference or action agenda. So consent items and anything in the, in the C section. How many do we have? Okay. We do have eight. So we're going to close the public comment at this time. Mr. Heron will call three names at a time. When your name is called, in order, please line up so that we can move through this efficiently. And you'll have three minutes and you'll get a warning when your time's almost up.
Ms. Fell on allowing incoming siblings of current transfers, followed by Meg Miller on the transfer policy, followed by Ms. Palmerance on the transfer policy.
Hi, I'm Lisa Fell and I represent Washington School. And many parents, when I speak of the issue of siblings, not, currently siblings have been allowed to go to the school where their current transfers are going. So I'm talking about intra-district transfers into a school where there's a current transfer and the sibling is coming in as a kindergartner. That's always been a case where they've been able to come in, they've made space for the siblings to come in. And now I hear that that's changing. I'm not sure if that's a financial reason because those siblings are still going to be in the district. So they still need to find a teacher for these students. So I know that it could also be an issue of sending families back to their original neighborhood schools. And if that's the main reason for doing it, my plea is, I'm not sure what the rush is in doing siblings. I can understand doing new families, having them, encourage them to go to their neighborhood school. But it, the impact that it would have on having siblings go to two different schools does not seem, it doesn't seem necessary to rush into that. So that's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg Miller, followed by Ms. Palmerance, followed by Ms. Iverson.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight on the subject of changes to the transfer policy, which severely restricts the number of transfers a school may accept. While I am supportive of efforts to encourage people to attend their neighborhood schools, it is not clear to me that the system-wide impact of this change to the transfer policy has been considered by the board. Has a comprehensive study been conducted to determine if the changes to the policy would increase or decrease costs to the district? What will be the fiscal impact of rearranging the numbers in our elementary schools? Some attendant costs would likely be relocating and renovating portable buildings, reassigning staff, and moving staff and supplies from one school to another. It is not clear to me that anyone understands all the attendant costs of this policy change. I respectfully ask the board to research these matters, which are of increased importance in this time of fiscal stress. A second related issue concerns the numerous families requesting transfers who are coming from schools that are in program improvement, or PI. I've been assured by the administration that there will be room to place all of these students at schools that are not in program improvement, as required by law. But there are currently three elementary schools in PI, with two more at risk of entering PI this summer. And if classes do need to be added for these students opting out of PI schools, which school or schools will be allowed to add classes? And how will that choice be made? Why not accommodate such students in the very schools that have the capacity to do so presently? The change to the policy might seem minor, but there will be many attendant consequences. I urge the board to assess how this policy change will impact the district fiscally and in other respects, and to consider delaying the implementation of the policy change until the effects have been studied and deemed to be wise and manageable. Thank you all very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Ms. Palmerance, followed by Ms. Iverson, followed by Lane Wheeler.
Thank you. And good evening. Good evening. My name is Laura Palmerance. I have a student at Washington School and I'm an intra-district transfer family. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed measures or policies that would impact my son, who's a kindergartner, and restrict him from joining his sister, who is currently a second grader. Like my two fellow parents that spoke before me, my concerns are similar. I feel that this particular policy is the wrong policy at the wrong time. I feel that further study, further analysis needs to be done in order to truly understand the ripple effect, not only at our independent schools, but also throughout the district. I feel like this is absolutely the wrong time. As, as Meg just stated, this is a policy which, if, if in fact, it was studied conclusively and we realized that maybe this is the way to go, that this could be attained better the 2010, 2011 academic school year. My fellow parents and I were, two weeks ago, when we first got wind of this, were just broadsided. We, my husband and I, you know, in, in good faith, did our due diligence, filled out our paperwork, did everything that we were supposed to do with intention that our son was going to join his sister. You know, we have made social, physical, emotional provisions to do that. Now, at this very late date in the game, I got the word, I got on the phone, I called public schools to see what their waiting lists were for the kindergarten programs. I called private schools. I was told by three of the private schools that I had researched before to prepare myself for something like this, and their programs were all closed. Three of the public schools were also closed for kindergarten enrollment. And then I called the district, spoke to support staff, and they said that I need to get my paperwork in pronto, or I will be closed out of my own resident school. I think you can all appreciate the stress and duress that that puts us all in. And I think, well, if I could ask you just to imagine for a moment, to put yourselves in this, under this very stressful economic time, as Meg had mentioned, and just to really think hard about whether this is a, a policy or a measure that can be avoided or not. Thank you.
Thank you. You may want to talk to Ms. Swoski, Dr. Swoski.
Well, we'll contact the speaker.
Okay.
No, in fact, on the priority list, students from the attendance area really have priority over all other students. So no, we do not want to close out students who are residing in the attendance area. So we'll get ahold of you. Thank you.
Okay. And this topic will be on one of the agendas in the future, too. Ms. Iverson, followed by Lane, Dr., Mr. Wheeler, followed by Kate Smith.
All right. Hello again. I just wanted to speak on behalf of Youth Council and let you know about some measures we as the youth are doing in these hard economic times. Next Thursday, April 23rd, at 7 o'clock Next Thursday, April 23rd, at 7 o'clock, we're going to be hosting an art show at the teen center. This art show is in response to the graffiti speak-out that we had in January, and it's based solely off of the media of Aerosol, and it's open to all high school and junior high students. There's a $3 suggested donation at the door, there's going to be music and food, and I wanted to open the invitation to all school board members and the public that this is going to be happening at that time. So thank you very much, and I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler, followed by Kate Smith.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. May 19th is a election, statewide election of historic proportions. Right now, the state of California has an $8 billion budget hole, and that hole is projected to go to $20 billion if the special election in May fails to garner the support it needs to pass. And I have communicated to Dr. Sarvis in writing, and he has received a suggested proclamation from the California Teachers Association, and I would ask the Board of Education and the District of Santa Barbara School District to join with the California Teachers Association and the local association, Santa Barbara Teachers Association, supporting the proposals that are on the May 19th special election. While these particular proposals all have some limitations, we have to look at the greater good in this case, and how our state will fare, how education will fare if this election fails to generate the support it needs. I would call upon the Board of Education to move forward in an expedient and immediate fashion to support this proclamation, and I call upon you to do so at your most prompt and convenient time. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mrs. Smith, you have public comments, D5, D10, and D11, and you have three minutes.
Oh, usually, the board would allow people to speak three minutes on each agenda item, but they have decided to stop public input. So, members of the board, my name is Kate Smith. I'm an education reform activist, and I'm asking that you visit sbschooltalk.com. And I would like to mention that the Casey waivers are a scam. The students that can't be pushed into the school to prison pipeline are just Casey waivered. They are graduated, they are not educated, and it is bad. There's a class action lawsuit right on the district administration. It was put up there, May 7th, 2008, almost a year ago, and it's just a matter of time before the state comes and says, "You've been Casey wavering all the students that you haven't taught and that you couldn't push into the pipeline." Basic aid, if you follow some of the education websites, it will be allowed for no more than two more years. So I would ask that you would get a grip. And I would like to read this from SB School Talk. It's from a book called Fixing America's Broken Public Education. There are over 56 million websites, if you Google corruption, schools, education reform, administrative scandals. I'd like to read this, because there is an education industrial complex. It is serious. Education is our nation's number-one industry. It's the largest budget item in the country, and it's our first entitlement as citizens that we would have an educational system so that we could have democratic citizens. Here's the excerpt. "In the 21st century, American resistance to genuine education reform is a self-indulgence that threatens the nation. The first step in achieving real education reform is a sober recognition of the failings of opposing forces." That's like, well, it's a great wall. Here it is. Teacher and administrator unions and associations, as well as a variety of other professional education associations, who see education reform as a threat to their personal and professional comfort.
27 seconds, Mrs. Smith.
The plethora of commercial interests who fear education reform would disrupt their profits as suppliers to schools. Laws on the local, state, and national levels designed to thwart real and true substantive
10 seconds.
... education reform, and apathy on the part of too many citizens, and an American cultural resistance to any substantive change in the way schools are structured and operated.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Please visit SB School Talk. Please mobilize. Please help change education.
Mrs. Bream, Mrs. Eichenberger, and Mrs. Shrove.
Hi, I'm Cory Bream. I'm a parent of a special ed child at Washington, and he's autistic, so it is Autism Awareness Month. I'm here to talk about something about special ed, but I just thought I'd mention that autism is the third-most common developmental disability today. Just food for thought. I'm actually up here to request something in an effort to move special ed forward in a positive manner, and maybe make some small changes to a system that is not quite working well. I'd like to ask that the aides for next school year be brought in one day early and be paid for a half a day. That way, many things can happen. If you can imagine, special ed kids are a little overwhelmed by crowds. They could be allowed, the parent and the child could be allowed to come to the school, see their classroom when it's not packed full of kids, meet their teacher, because most of the time the teachers are setting up their classroom anyway and are already present. They would then be able to meet their special ed aide, especially if they do have a special ed aide, and then in a quiet environment when there isn't total chaos, because even when general ed kids go to school that first day, it's pretty chaotic. They could then meet the aide and maybe have a calm, rational discussion, not while dropping the child off. "By the way, my kid has seizures, and this is what you need to watch for, and we'll have a good day." "Oh, by the way, I don't have an aide. I was talking to the teacher." "Yeah, there's 32 students, no aide, but I'm supposed to have an aide, and here's my autism seizure kid. Bye-bye." Okay, that's been every year I've been in the district. So I just had a thought that maybe, maybe, maybe we could start by organizing who the aides are, where they should go, where they're needed, where they're wanted, and those aides could start just be paid for a half a day, a half a day, three to four hours at the class, so they could, again, meet their special ed director, whomever that might be, the CDC classroom, whatever the organizational situation is at that school, because they all do vary, I'm aware now. But then they could meet that person, they could find out what their responsibility is, who the students they are in charge of, and then have the ability, if the parent chooses, and most would, after talking to many of them, as you know, I'm involved in the special ed kind of advocacy program. Many of them would, many of them would bring their kids and talk to these aides and get organized a day before. And so I'm just thinking, positive, proactive, small change. It would be great if we hired those aides and asked them to come to school a day early, one day, half a day, and meet everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Bream. Mrs. Eichenberger, followed by Mrs. Shrove.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Sarvis, this is my son Jared, 16, and Jared has autism. And I'm here actually speaking today as the president of the local chapter of the Autism Society of America. Today, 60 families learned that their child has autism. April is Autism Awareness Month, and according to the CDC, one in 150 children in the United States will be diagnosed with autism. That's one in 94 boys. It's four times more prevalent in boys than girls. California continues to add two new cases of autism a day, seven days a week. While frightening, these numbers are not surprising to autism parent leaders in the state. We've been alerting politicians, school districts, regional centers, physicians, and other public agencies for years that the number of children with autism is increasing dramatically, and these children will be arriving at their doorsteps in droves. Agencies have been asked repeatedly whether they're prepared to serve this influx of children with the appropriate interventions they'll need to lead productive, independent lives. Unfortunately, the children have arrived, and appropriate services and supports are scarce, sometimes impossible for our children and adults to access. No long-range master plan's been developed to fund effective services to meet either the needs of our kids or their long-term needs once these children reach adulthood. We cannot delay in stepping up our commitment to provide effective, evidence-based interventions for people with autism. It's time for every parent and every agency that serves our kids to join together in a strong and cohesive fashion to find ways to serve our kids appropriately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shrove.
I am also here because it is Autism Awareness Month. I am a parent of three children, two in this district, all three will be next year. One of them has autism, and I am the vice president of the Autism Society of America Santa Barbara Chapter. With me are two of our members who are also autism parents in the community. The Autism Society of America established April as Autism Awareness Month in 1972. This observance provides an opportunity for the ASA, its state chapters, and others in the autism community to educate the public about this disorder. The high rate of autism among all races, ethnicities, and social groups points to a greater need for education, particularly with regard to the early diagnosis of this complex developmental disorder. Autism Society of America Santa Barbara Chapter provides local support to families affected by autism and related disabilities throughout the county. We are the primary resource for individuals and families living with autism. Through our four pillars of advocacy, awareness, education, and support, we dedicate ourselves to empowering people to succeed in living with autism. And I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about what we're doing this month. On the Fourth of April, the first Saturday of the month, we held our Second Annual Santa Maria Autism Awareness and Resource Fair. We welcomed over 400 people to Pioneer Park. We had 21 informational speakers, 28 vendor booths. We had Spanish translation throughout the day for those who required. We had booths that covered every service provider imaginable, behavioral, speech and language, occupational therapy, sensory integration. We had the school district representatives, we had the tri-counties regional center representatives, both public and private agencies there. The mayor of Santa Maria, who is himself an autism grandparent, proclaimed Autism Awareness Month in Santa Maria and offered us a proclamation certificate at the time. In the downtown library in Santa Maria, there is an autism awareness display in their glass case. If you walk into the Santa Barbara Downtown Library, you will see a similar display on the main floor, just past the circulation desk, right on the center aisle. I invite you to go and look. We set up our literature, information about our organization, and the librarians are supportive enough to pull from their own stacks and collections
30 seconds.
... books and information on the disorder for parents and others to avail themselves and become informed. At the end of this month, we are sponsoring with the Cambridge Center for Behavioral Studies, the Second Cambridge Center Conference on Autism Evidence-Based Practices. It is an all-day workshop available to parents and professionals at the Buellton Marriott. We have yet to see anybody from Santa Barbara School District register for that workshop. And we would urge all of you, these are evidence-based practices, this is what the research says works with our kids. We urge the district to please send at least a few staff to be educated. Thank you very much.
I did, I did think we had some registered, and I was mistaken. There's another Selpa session the week after that. So I thought we had three or four registered, but I hope we can, I've got a brochure on it. I hope there's still time, and it's a, you know, it's a vital topic, obviously.
Thank you. Moving on to item C4, acceptance of donations.
Move to accept with the appreciation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes 5-0. And then to the consent agenda, any items to pull?
We are pulling item D16.
Oh, good, I wanted to talk about that later. We can talk about that later. D16, what else?
We're pulling it from the consent agenda. We'll have to bring it back to a future agenda.
I'd still like to talk about it, though.
Okay.
So we can talk about it later. Mr. Heron?
I'd just comment on the minutes that we're approving, and it's not major, but every single minute, I think I read, when we get to the end of the night, there's agenda ideas, direct reports, and it's always none, none, none. And I think we do make, and I don't know what goes into minutes, but, or future activities or future events, and I know I make comments, and I know other members make comments, and I'd rather see some, some of the work, doing our job and talking about things than just seeing none all the time. But I don't know how you make that determination, so.
I'm sorry. I just, I just asked that in the minutes, at the very end, when we're all by ourselves, normally.
So sad.
We, we do things.
Yes, Mr. Wheeler, you're here.
But if you read the minute, you'd think we were deaf and dumb and not doing anything. So I'd like to see some comments if we do make them in some way.
Any other items to pull? Dr. Noel?
D10, 11, and 12.
D10, 11, and 12? Any others?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Okay. Now we are on to the action agenda. Item E1, the approval of resolution number 0809-34, authorizing borrowing not to exceed $18 million in funds for fiscal year 0910 and the issuance and sale of 2009-10 tax and revenue anticipation notes for the Santa Barbara School Districts.
And Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent, will present this.
Every year, we do a short-term borrowing called a tax and revenue anticipation note. The acronym is known as a TRANs. And the reason we do that is that, as you know, we're a revenue limit district, and we're dependent on both state aid and local property taxes. We start incurring most of our expense when teachers come back to school in September and our payroll hits. So we have periods of negative cash flow over the current year, and so we need a short-term borrowing mechanism to basically fill those gaps. And usually, we do a TRANs for two reasons. One is for a cash flow basis, because we have to wait till our property taxes first come in December, because we're basically get a piddly apportionment from the state over the first couple of months. And also, we usually generally issue a TRANs because we can earn arbitrage or interest. And the way we do that is we're able to basically borrow at tax-exempt rates, but then reinvest those proceeds when they're not being used in taxable securities. But because the spread is so close now between, you know, taxable securities and interest, governmental interest rates, we're not going to be able to earn much interest there, but we are going to need it for a cash flow basis. And I probably should point out that the cash flow issues become significantly pronounced due to the fact that the state has basically done all kinds of stuff with the apportionment schedules, switching them over fiscal years to basically help their own cash flow situation. And so we need a TRANs more, now more than ever. And probably that really explains the sizing, is we're going to a not-to-exceed of $18 million. Last year, we went to a not-to-exceed of $15 million. Both the issues with the apportements being delayed and crossing over fiscal years from the state, and the fact that we're going to incur additional payroll expense due to our, the payroll that's associated with the parcel tax expense, and we won't receive those parcel taxes until we actually receive the property tax. So at this point, we're asking you to basically authorize a not-to-exceed amount. We'll have to justify it to the rating agencies with the cash flow that we've already started working on, and we're asking for your approval at this time.
All right. Any questions, board members? Mrs. Deacon?
That's okay. I just had a quick question. Do we have a ballpark amount for the interest rates, both what we pay and what we get?
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%. All right. Dr. Noel, you made a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes 4-0. It passes four-zero. Moving on to E2, approval of resolutions 200809-36 and 200809-37, authorizing and directing application of bond proceeds.
And Eric Smith will make this presentation on our bond refunding amounts.
On June 20th, 2007, the board approved, uh, what's called a cash-out refunding. And a cash-out refunding of general obligation bonds differs in the sense from a normal refunding, where you just refund at a lower interest rate, and actually that amount decreases the taxpayers' tax rate. A cash-out refunding basically allows you to incur additional debt to use for projects. At the point in time that the cash-out refunding was undertaken, there was actually no law or legal opinion out there that would prevent cash-out refundings. But since the time that it was actually undertaken, the Attorney General's office has rendered an opinion basically prohibiting cash-out refundings in the future. When the cash-out refunding was done, there was a provision inserted in the resolution that allows the board to call, which is basically call the bonds and actually rebate that to the bondholders and basically have a positive effects on the taxpayers. However, to do that, the board has to adopt a resolution to set those wheels in motion. Actually, the first time the call provision could actually be exercised would be on August 1st of 2010, although I think it's in our best interest to move forward right now and get this matter behind us, and we're asking for your approval at this point in time.
Board members, any discussion of this item? Mrs. Deacon?
I, I think it would be-
Oh, Dr. Noel?
This is kind of, the situation with the portables at Washington's schools connected to this. You know, it might be a, some members of the public might-
Yeah. There's a couple of issues. The projects that, in the elementary district, that was tied to this funding source was the Washington Portable project. We're going to be bringing back a proposed financing schedule to basically deal with that project at the April 28th board meeting. I've been working with Municipal Finance Corporation on a municipal lease and looking at various options that would allow us both to do a amortized payment schedule either over five, seven, or 10 years with a prepayment provision. And I just got the data as of yesterday, and we're refining it at this point. So absolutely, this was the proceeds that were supposed to carry out that project. It kind of suspended it on the basis of the AG's opinion, but we're actually taking an affirmative action, hopefully, on the April 28th board meeting to basically resolve that issue.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let me, let me state that so that we're very clear about it. We were, we were moving ahead on the Washington Portable project. The, the Attorney General opinion effectively pulled the plug on that project, and we've had to go through other measures to finance that project. So that's the bad news. The good news, of course, is that the district will be returning money to the taxpayers. So we shouldn't lose sight of that one as well.
Good point.
Mr. Herron?
As long as we're talking about Washington, I think I'd, I'd like to thank Mr. Hetjung. Over the spring break, part of the Washington problem was an eyesore on the playground area, and the, our, our staff worked over the week, over the holiday for the spring break, and have made it more respectable. You know, a lot would say it's not perfect.
And thank you, but I do want to make sure that we stay on topic here.
Well, this is Washington, we're talking about Washington School.
So, Mrs. Deacon, did you have anything to add?
No, I, I just wanted to say that I, I think that this was definitely the right move. The board had to make this decision to return this money. It's unfortunate. It, it pulled short our project at Washington, but I am hopeful that we'll be able to move forward on that. And so at this point, I'd just like to make a motion to go ahead and, and accept, approve this resolution, authorizing and directing the application of bond proceeds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes five-zero. And E3, public hearing on, and Board of Education approval of resolution to change the name of the Santa Barbara High School District to the Santa Barbara Secondary District.
Let me just introduce the topic, and then you'd like to go to the public hearing, I'm sure. At our last board meeting, we discussed changing the name of the secondary district to Santa Barbara High, uh, Santa Barbara Secondary School District, rather than Santa Barbara High School District, in recognition of the grade levels that are served in the secondary district, grade seven through 12. We do have a resolution on the, on the agenda, and we should have a public hearing on that right now.
All right. So procedurally, I will now open the public hearing on the resolution to change the name of the Santa Barbara High School District to the Santa Barbara Secondary District. First of all, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Board members, discussion? I have to say, I got nothing out there either. I waited for the emails about this, I waited for the phone calls, I got nothing. It does not seem to be a highly controversial topic.
That was the only email I didn't get.
I've seen, I've seen a couple of smiles. I'm not sure how to interpret them.
All right. Well, with no further discussion, then, I'm going to close the public hearing and then call for a motion.
Move to approve the change.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes five-zero. All right. E4, board action on student expulsion case numbers. And we have quite a list, and I did give the directive to please move briskly through the list. So let's get started. 0809-43. Somebody's got to start with a motion quick.
Okay. I move to approve recommendation of the hearing panel to stipulated one calendar-year expulsion for case 0809-43.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And there is one abstention.
I moved-
Sorry, Mrs. Cordero abstained. Go ahead.
I'd like to move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a one-school-year expulsion in case 0809-45.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes four-zero with the same abstention. Keep going?
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a one-school-year expulsion in case 0809-46.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes four-zero, same abstention.
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a one-calender-year expulsion in case 0809-47.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, that's four-zero with Mrs. Cordero abstaining.
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a one-calender-year expulsion in case 0809-48.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes four-zero, Cordero abstaining.
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a one-school-year expulsion in ca, case 0809-50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes four-zero, Cordero abstaining.
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a stipulated one-school-year expulsion in case 0809-53.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five-zero.
I move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a stipulated one-school-year expulsion in case 0809-54.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a stipulated one-school-year suspended expulsion in case 0809-55.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes five-zero.
Move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a stipulated one-school-year expulsion in case 0809-56.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five-zero.
And lastly, move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel to a recommended revocation of suspended expulsion in case 0809-22.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously as well. Okay. Wow, we are actually a little bit ahead of schedule. It's time for our break. We will break for 15 minutes and then return to the conference agenda at 8:15.
If there are people who would like to speak on-
We are coming back from our break and moving from the action agenda to the conference agenda. And item F1, which is request to address the Board of Education on the role of counselors in achieving district objectives by Emily Ritchie and Silvina Pereira. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and district personnel, and thank you for your time. My name is Silvina Pereira, counselor at Dos Pobos High School. And tonight, we are here as secondary school counselors to show you how we play a mission-critical role in achieving district-wide objectives, promoting achievement for every student in these three domains, academic, career, and personal social. Prior to the passage of AB 1802, California ranked 50th in the U.S. in student-to-counselor ratios, 50th, twice the national average, four times that recommended of the American School Counselors Association of a ratio of 250 to 1. Due to state funding from AB 1802 for the last two years, the district has been able to hire seven counselors, thus allowing all high school counselors and junior high school counselors the opportunity to achieve the mandate set forth by AB 1802, which focuses it, focuses on these two elements. Individualized review and meeting with each student and their parents, and individualized conference with at-risk students and their parent. And again, how? By reducing counselor ratios to approximately 300 to 1 in both junior high and high schools, which provides each student the opportunity with timely, relevant, accurate information. This is just a sample of the individualized review and meeting that takes place with each student at the junior high school level. This is a sample graph. In one junior high school, for one school year, the graph represents at-risk students who scored below basic or far below basic on the California Standards Test in either English or math. As you can see, SSTs were held, there was continuous parent contact, IAPs were attended, continuous student contact, mediations were held, along with other interventions. This is a sample of a high school individualized review meeting with each student. We review academic record, attendance, educational options, career preparation, college preparation, et cetera. We've given you samples of our forms in which we utilize when, when meeting with each individual student and their families. So essentially, the goals are to reform school counseling in California, aligning school counseling with the American School Counselors Association's national standards and the California's Association School Counselor State Standards, of which, by the way, we are currently being evaluated in this district with the California School Counselor State model. The American School Counselor Association recommends a counseling ratio of 250 to 1 in both junior high and high schools in order to provide intentional guidance for at-risk students, classroom guidance at all grade levels, more collaboration with teachers and administrators to address student needs of all students, setting measurable goals and monitoring student progress, essentially implementing, implementing a consistent data-driven program. So it's, there, there's a paradigm shift, folks. Changing roles, the old model, reactive, process-based, services provided. New model, proactive, results-based, data-driven. Okay? So the old question would, was, what do counselors do? The new question has begun, how are students different because of what counselors do? All students will gain competencies that will empower them to acquire the knowledge, the skills, the positive attitude to improve academics, attendance, behavior. The next slides will show you some data critical to this, and the, the improvements that we've made. Test-taking, SAT has increased in the last two years. Number of students taking the SAT Reasonings test, and as you know, this is a gateway to college entrance, has increased since the implementation of AB 1802. Number of students taking the ACT, total numbers, not as well-known for most students, but with increased conversation and individual interviews or meetings with students, they're becoming more aware. Number of advanced placement courses taken in our district in the high school level has increased. The number of IB courses taken at the high school level at DP has increased. The number, and we're never going to forget, career technical education courses, has increased. With continued funding, you can anticipate that these numbers will continue to climb. District-wide expulsions are my, my fault, we've got suspensions, this is district-wide expulsions, has decreased. Why? We're communicating with students, folks. We're having conversations about behavior. We're helping them access resources within their school and within the community. District-wide truancy has decreased. In, in 0708, with full implementation of AB 1802, along with district determining truancy program, results clearly show a significant decrease in district-wide truancy at the secondary level. With the elimination of the district's truancy program, we highly anticipate a rise for this school year. In nine, in 0910, a combination of the loss of the program, truancy, and a potential loss of school counselors, just by one, will significantly impact any monetary gains the district has made in the last two years. An increase in truancy means a loss of revenue to the general fund of this district at a rate of $36.85 per pupil per day. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Emily Ritchie, and I'm a counselor at Santa Barbara High School. I am one of seven counselors who are funded by the temporary AB 1802 funds. The next several slides will show you some information you've probably already received through letters from your district counselors. The board has published several goals for the 2009-2010 school year, of which the Santa Barbara School District counselors are already playing a major role. Next year, you plan to implement a K-12 gang prevention and intervention program. Since spring of 2008, counselors have been involved in this. When we were asked to meet with representatives from the district office, the county board of ed, and the local police department to help recommend students identified as at-risk for gang involvement. We've worked with those students and their families as they exited the summer program in the last year, and are happy to say that many of these students have achieved success both at home and at school. However, with increased caseloads, we will not have the time, nor will we be able to get to know our students well enough to service them in this way. As stated in your own board goals, you would like all schools to exceed annual state and federal academic performance targets. We are already working with this. We thoroughly reviewed disaggregated data from API scores, and we're vigilantly working towards eliminating the achievement gap in these ways and in many more. Your goals also state that every school will significantly increase participation of underrepresented students in advanced courses such as GATE, AP, and dual enrollment. Not only do we personally schedule students into these classes, we also counsel them one-on-one and with their families to educate them about the programs. We follow up with students when they're successful and when they're struggling, and are a vital link between these students and the many programs we offer. Your goals also state that you would like to see an increase in the number of students and underrepresented students who are eligible for college admissions. We have more underrepresented students eligible for college than ever before. They are planning at a much earlier point in their academic careers through six and four-year plans in junior high school and in high school. We work with programs in the community such as CalSO and directly with the UC and CalState systems to educate, inform, and assist our students in readying themselves for college. Eliminating counselors for our district, we currently have 26.7, or we, you are looking at proposing to eliminate 3.0 permanent counseling positions, along with seven temporary positions funded by AB 1802. Of the AB 1802 funds, the state of California intends to decrease funding by up to 20% in the next school year, and districts will no longer be required to allot these funds toward counseling personnel as they have in the past. As a tier-three program, we also know that these funds could be swept into the general fund. We currently have 26.7 permanent counseling positions in our district and seven AB 1802-funded temporary positions. It's important to know that these temporary positions are not people filling in for permanent counseling positions due to sabbatical or maternity leave. We are considered temporary because of the soft-money source of funding. Proposed budget cuts would leave 23.7 permanent counseling positions and at best three to four of the AB 1802-funded positions. This is an 18% cut from one department alone. At a previous board meeting, it was said by district personnel that they were cutting 3% from each department. If the three permanent positions are cut, you'd be setting a dangerous precedent regarding the importance of school counseling in this district, as it is highly unlikely that the three permanent positions would ever be reinstated. Keeping counselors for our district means that caseloads would be, remain aligned with both state and national models, both which suggest a ratio of 250 to 1. At present, there is no California-set ratio. Schools in California are allowed to increase counselor-to-student ratios as much as they'd like. Counselors with the 250 to 1 ratio currently in place would be able to continue to meet with every student at the intensity we have maintained for the last two years. This results in over 10,000 to 13,000 individual student conferences every year, equivalent to five face-to-face meetings per student per year. every year, equivalent to five face-to-face meetings per student per year. This slide is just a sample of some of the additional responsibilities counselors have been able to undertake because of our decreased caseloads. These and many more responsibilities we're involved in just won't get done if counseling positions are eliminated. Our recommendations for the Santa Barbara School District Board of Education are to reinstate the three permanent counseling positions you proposed eliminating and to continue to fund all seven AB-1802-funded counselors so that we will be funded at the current student-to-counselor ratio. We know that what we're doing makes a difference. You've invested in a program for the last two years that is working. Preliminary evidence, such as some that we've given you tonight in your packet, shows that reduced caseloads result in student success in a wide variety of areas. This is your chance, as a board of ed, to show your community, your students, your parents, your district, your county, and even your state, that the Santa Barbara School District cares about its students, and that it will do everything in its power to promote success for its students no matter the cost. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I apologize. I didn't ask if any of you had any questions at this time.
Well, I'm sure.
And we'd be happy to address them.
Okay. First of all, Ms. Pereira and Ms. Ritchie, I'm sure that this was a group effort by counselors to put this presentation together.
Absolutely.
However, it is very difficult to come and speak before the board. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
And I hope that your team is proud of you for that. So, thank you. We may want to go ahead and take public comment on this. So I'm going to close to public comment at this point. And if you just want to stay nearby in case we have questions, that would be great.
Mr. Esposito, Ms. Chauv, and Ms. Green.
Good evening, board members. My name is Anton Esposito. I am 13 years old, and I attend an eighth grade, and I am, excuse me, I am 13 years old and in eighth grade, and I attend a local junior high school. In the past, I have experienced minor physical and verbal harassment problems in school. I have talked to my parents about it and tried to handle it myself, but finally, I got to the point where I needed to talk with my counselor. My counselor listened carefully to my problems and helped a lot in taking care of the problem. I really don't know how things would have ended up if I hadn't had a counselor to go to. My counselor talked to me frequently and also talked to my parents and me together. She got the right additional school faculty involved, and action was taken to fix the problem. I have talked to other friends and students who have used the help of counselors, and they have said their counselors have given them moral support and helped them through the hardships of bullying. So my own experience, combined with the experiences of other students, has shown me how vital counselors are to schools. They protect, they build self-esteem, and they make sure that school is a place where you can learn and grow without the interference and damage of bullying and harassment.
Ms. Green?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Green. My son is Paul, and he will be graduating this year from Santa Barbara High School. He has a learning disability, and he's an only child. He was honored last October as Student of the Month, and we are very proud of him. My husband and I had our education in Mexico. Because of that, it was really difficult for us to know the system and the process regarding how we need to do, what we need to do to help him to get, how to help him after he graduated from high school and be able to get a higher education. My son is very interested in law, and he wants to study criminology. My husband and I work full-time, and there is no way that we can maneuver the system by ourselves without counselor's assistance. It really, it's no way. To help Paul to accomplish his dreams, we got in contact with his counselor. She took us by the hand and walked us through the process. She has been an advocate. When her skills and information make the difference in the process, the gift to the Green family was our contact to her and to be able to get in contact with the Landmark University, which specializes on students with disabilities. For that, without her support, I will not be able, or my son will not be able, to get a higher education. And for that, I will be, me and my family, especially my son, will be grateful for counselor service. I asked my son what had he to say about the counseling that he received over the years at the school, and his response says that it was inspirational, motivational, and always they were ready to listen, and their quick response was invaluable to him. So I please ask you to think no use about the regular students. Students with disability, they need more support too. And I have to say that Hispanics, a lot of times, they don't have communication. Kids with their parents because of the language and counselors are a huge help to students and to try to be successful. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chauv, followed by Ms. Britton Bass.
Hello again. I'm here this evening because Emily Ritchie is my daughter's counselor at Santa Barbara High School. My daughter attended a very, very small, private school for kindergarten through eighth grade, and last June, she graduated as one of 32 in her graduating eighth-grade class. And she transitioned from a very small, private, elementary model school to a very large, public, secondary high school, and the transition could not have been smoother. I couldn't believe it myself until I saw it happening. I was prepared for there to be all kinds of hiccups and bumps in the road, and there were not. She slipped in, she was at home, she followed her schedule, she had friends, and life went on as if she had been doing that model of schooling for the previous nine years. And the only thing that I can attribute that success to is the fact that Emily Ritchie not only held her hand, she held her mother's hand through that transition process. And you may have gathered, I can be a little bit high maintenance. Ms. Ritchie was available to her whenever she needed her. She was available to me with a rapid response of email that is unimaginable. And had I known at the time that she was supporting not just my family but 299-plus other families, I would not have believed it possible. And I cannot believe that the level of care and support that my family received could be any way near possible with a caseload of higher than they're currently supporting. I can't believe that they do what they do now at the level they do it with 300-plus students each. If you give them 400 or 500 students each, it can't happen. And then there will be children in the cracks. Thank you.
Ms. Britton Bass?
Hi. Others may share statistics of student counselor ratios. They may try to sway you with their stories of unthinkable events that happen at our nation's schools, including California and the Central Coast, that could perhaps have been minimized or avoided if we had enough counselors working with and getting to know each individual student in our secondary schools. I'm choosing to tell another side of that story tonight, the story about how lives of students are potentially changed for the better and how counselors, by having a manageable caseload, can get to know their students and actually change the world. In my role as the Education Department Chair at Antioch University across the street, one of my roles is interviewing potential students for a master's in education program. Several years ago, in an interview of a Latina, I heard a most amazing story. I spoke with this now graduate of our program yesterday and got permission to tell this story because she, to this day, credits her success in life to a school counselor here at her high school in Santa Barbara. Gloria was a typical daughter of parents who had immigrated to the area from Mexico. Growing up, she believed education was not considered an asset. She was discouraged by her parents from pursuing an education because they expected her to get married, have children, and contribute to the family's financial survival. She was told not to go to school because it was a waste of time, since she would be having her own family obligation soon. Gloria remembers her high school counselor calling her out of class one day in her senior year. She'd been paying attention to Gloria's progress, had gotten to know her, and recognized her potential. When it was suggested that Gloria applied to college, she was both confused and excited. The counselor actually filled out the college applications for her and helped her get a scholarship. She would not have been able to do, nor would she have followed through on her own without this support. She remembers getting notices from the universities announcing what to do to start school in the fall and was quite nervous, but was strengthened by the support that she had received and managed to leave Santa Barbara attending a four-year institution. She recounts now that all of her friends from high school the following year were either married, pregnant, in jail, or on drugs. She was the only one who had begun this new life. She believes she would have followed her friends if it hadn't been that she was directed to a different path. This is a great story already, a story about how a counselor who has the time to get to know and understand her students and their needs can make a difference, but the story isn't over. Gloria finished her MA degree, got a better job, and leaves this week from Mexico to represent the Central Coast as the Health and Education Community Worker for Immigrantes Mexicanos en el Exterior. This group, sponsored by the U.S. consulate-
Twenty seconds.
... counterpart in Mexico, is gathering in Mexico next week with representatives of our country, Canada, and other Central and South American countries to begin discussing the issues of Mexican immigrants in these countries. She will be meeting President Calderon. The Mexican government will be funding projects abroad to assist with Mexican immigrants, and is anticipated that some of this funding may even find its way to this school district. Vive los counselors.
Thank you very much.
Board members, any comments or discussion on the presentation?
I would just like to thank the whole group for spending their Easter weekend working on this. So I know you put a lot of time and effort into it, and I appreciate it very much.
All right. Thank you. We will now move to item F2, which is the first reading of the fiscal solvency plan. Before Dr. Sarvis starts introducing this, I also want to apologize, and perhaps I'm apologizing on behalf of other board members as well. We did receive so many emails that I either haven't been able to respond to them all or I haven't been able to respond to them at the level that I usually like to. So I think that we all really appreciate the amount of community input that we've received on this. It has been very important to us as we shape our opinions on this, and I'm only sorry that we can't get to every single email. So, Dr. Sarvis?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to comment really quickly on the counselor presentation as well because the fact that we are not asking questions or giving input at this point, I hope is not being construed as a lack of attention to the presentation that you made, because I think we're all impressed by the amount of work and detail that went into your presentation. This is something that we will have to consider, and we obviously will be coming back to us again at a future date, at which time we will certainly have a great deal to say about it. So I want you to definitely understand that we have heard what you had to say tonight, and we are taking it into full consideration. So, thank you.
Dr. Noel?
I did have comments on it, but I was going to wait because it's on the list of potential budget cuts.
Absolutely. We can talk about it then.
Thought that'd be the place to talk about. That's what, the next item?
Yes, that's what we're starting now.
All right.
I do want to close to public comments at this time on F2, the fiscal solvency plan. So if you plan on speaking on that, please get your speaker card up here at this point.
Well, it's sad that we must make budget cuts again this year, but we do. We do need to. We've been spending the last couple of months soliciting ideas from a broad spectrum of the community about things that we can do to either enhance revenue or make cost savings, budget reductions. Making this presentation is the point person on all of[1467.67][1468.13][Crosstalk 00:00:17] our deputy superintendent, Eric Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Twice each year, the Santa Barbara School District's Board of Education is asked to certify interim financial reports regarding the district's financial position and submit them to the Santa Barbara County Education Office. The board has to certify the interim reports as either positive, qualified, or negative. A positive certification means that we can meet our current and subsequent two fiscal year obligations and maintain our reserve level, minimum reserve level, over the current and subsequent two years. A qualified certification means we may be able to meet our current and subsequent two fiscal year obligations and maintain our minimum reserve level. And a negative certification means that we can definitely not meet our current and subsequent two fiscal year obligations without jeopardizing our reserve. Now I have to move over to my next piece of paper. In October, or actually as of March, the board was able to certify at the second interim report level that it was a positive certification and that we would move forward with identifying the number of budget cuts that needed to be made. Although multi-year projections demonstrate that the districts can meet their 3% minimum recommended reserve requirement for fiscal years 8, 9, 9, 10, and 11, the districts must make at least $3 million in expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements to ensure that the reserve is not depleted by fiscal year 2011-2012. Since the multi-year projections that will accompany the adopted budget for the '09-'10 fiscal year will be for the 10, 11, and 11, 12 fiscal years, it's essential that these reductions and/or revenue enhancements occur prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 9, 10 budget. It should be noted that the multi-year projections indicate a best-case scenario where the five initiatives on the May 19 ballot pass, and that revenue estimates for K-12 education that are contained in the governor's May revised budget are not significantly reduced due to the increasing state deficit now estimated at $8 billion. In the event that one or both of these factors affect the status of the district's financial position, then additional expenditure reductions may be required. During the months of January, February, March, and April, the superintendent and deputy superintendent visited every school site in the district in order to explain the district's budget situation and to solicit input and ideas relative to the creation of a fiscal solvency plan. The attached fiscal solvency plan represents our best thinking to date with regard to the expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements that can be implemented for the 9, 10 fiscal year. I'd like to read the baseline assumptions of the plan. That the average total compensation medical and statutory benefits for classroom teachers is estimated to be in 9, 10, $85,000. The classified personnel total compensation, including medical and statutory benefits, will be calculated the approximate actual cost of the identified position. That estimated cost savings have been rounded. That cost savings are identified as ongoing unless explicitly identified as one time. For the purposes of the plan, expenditure reductions and revenue enhancements are used interchangeably. Only the cost savings to the unrestricted general fund is quantified, even though some cost savings may accrue to the restricted side of the general fund. That the cost savings are identified by district, where that is not known, it's a jointly funded position, we've actually used an allocation of 70% to the secondary district and 30% to the elementary. The plan presumes that there will already be a reduction of approximately 11.5 and 11.0 certificated full-time equivalents, respectively, to account for declining enrollment over the 9, 10, and 10, 11 fiscal years. Certain items contained in the plan are negotiable and require the cooperation of our employee associations to implement. In the event the board approves these recommendations and we fail to negotiate their implementation, the board will need to adopt additional measures to reduce expenditures and/or enhance revenues equal to the dollar value of those items that could not be negotiated. Education Code Section 35110 enables the districts to report their financials combined. However, the Santa Barbara County Education Office requires us to demonstrate our 3% minimum reserve level in each district. Therefore, we've broken out the cost savings by each district. No Measure H or Measure I funds are being used to offset expenditure reductions. However, it's anticipated that these funds will be charged indirect costs, as was originally contemplated in the development of the measure. Revenue limit and state categorical deficits are applied in accordance with the School Services of California Financial DART Board, which is the industry standard, and no federal stimulus money is contemplated in the plan. Restricted ending balances are anticipated to be swept from the restricted to the unrestricted side where permissible, and the transfer of Tier 3 categorical funding sources from the restricted to the unrestricted side of the budget that we know- the restricted to the unrestricted side of the budget that we know are identified in Exhibit B. The plan actually has two components. One is some things we did in fiscal year eight, nine to basically shore up the ending balance, but I'd like to skip over that and move to page nine, which are cost reductions and revenue enhancements for fiscal year nine, ten. Probably the first 1.4 are basically efficiency moves. Sometimes we refer to them as craftsmanship, efficiency, and I'll walk through each one. A, charge classified salaries to federal PL-94142 funds. In order to maximize the allowable exclusion to PERS reduction to the revenue limit, it's appropriate for us to budget the maximum amount of classified salaries against federal funds subject to some planning restrictions. That's PL-94142, which is actually the federal component of the special ed AB-602 model. Although this practice is an industry standard, it's not been implemented previously in this district. And I know somebody wanted an explanation of this and I'm going to give it to you. In 1982, the PERS rate, and PERS is actually the pension system that classified employees pay into as well as the employer, was 13.02 for the employer. California dropped the PERS rate in 1982, but we didn't get the savings. The state actually recaptured the savings. So, I think it dropped to 8% or 9%. So, that differential was recaptured by the state, and then what they ended up doing was giving it back to us in the revenue limit and then taking it back out through a payment through benefits. So, what this does is by, through the mechanics of the revenue limit, it reduces the amount that we have to pay back to the state and nets us a little bit more income. Disconnect unnecessary local telephone lines. After analysis of usage patterns, we've determined that 26 local telephone lines could be terminated without adversely impacting operations for a total savings of $7,135. Charge local donation accounts indirect cost rate currently at 5.13%. Donations from private contributors are managed by the business office. The business office is responsible for budgeting, accounting, and dispersment of these proceeds just like we are for categorical funds. It's appropriate to charge indirect cost rate here. We estimate based on current year receipts that next year if we charged indirect costs, there would be a net savings or a net benefit to the unrestricted general fund of roughly Institute parent pay transportation. We looked at this last year, but because of organizational capacity constraints and looking at the dollars that would actually be generated from here, we moved away from it, but we're looking at it again because it's harder and harder to find efficiencies in terms of trying to cut the budget. There is actually two constraining factors when you look at parent pay. The first is you cannot charge more than what the encroachment is, and we've identified based on the second interim report that the amount of unrestricted funds that are contributed over to the restricted home-to-school transportation program is $146,064. It would be easy just to divide that by the total amount of ridership, but that's not possible because those who can claim exemption under indigence would basically be exempted from any kind of parent pay fee, estimating that our ridership's about 533 elementary students and about 65% of them would be exempt due to that status. If we take that 187, which is basically the remainder, and divide it into the level of encroachment, we come up with a dollar value of about $783 per student per year for a total dollar value annualized of $146,064. Recognize licensed children institute special education funding. When the AB-602 funding model was developed, there was a shift in how licensed children institutions were funded under the state funding model for special ed. It's really just been worked out through our SELPA. Some SELPA's actually gained in this and some lost. We're actually one that gained and we're actually just working through the mechanics and we actually are going to be able to recognize those dollars going into next year for a net increase in revenue of $245,352. Reduce wireless telephone service. As you see, we've looked at, done the analysis. We recommend that 36 devices could be eliminated at multiple sites, basically resulting in a cost savings of $13,000. We're asking the board to look at seriously increasing the Civic Center Act fees, also known as property rentals or use of facilities fees in some district. We're proposing across the board increase of 10% and a 20% increase for the direct fee for the use of pools due to the additional burden that that's placed on the unrestricted general fund. If we took our existing fee schedules and applied those percentages, it would be $37,334. Continue lease of the Ortega Street campus. Last year, the board adopted the fiscal recovery plan that basically charged staff to examine the lease of real property located at 720 Santa Barbara Street. We entered into a temporary agreement with Antioch University for nine months, waiting for the disposition of the surplus facilities committee to make a recommendation about whether we could move the district office operations back over to Santa Barbara Junior High. It's pretty clear that, you know, that would be, we'd be shoehorned in there and that's probably not a viable alternative. So, now we think it's appropriate to memorialize this lease with Antioch University and do it on a 12-month basis. We do not have that in our multi-year projections because it was only a one-year deal. If we annualize it on a 12-month basis, it's $85,635. Have public pay for sport event parking. We're not sure logistically how we do this yet, although we did get a legal determination that we can do it. Our best estimates is we think we can basically generate about $25,000. Charge associated student body bookkeepers to the ASB fund. Basically, the ASB bookkeepers exist because of the ASB. There's a direct nexus there. We don't believe that the unrestricted general fund should support them, even though historically they have. If there wasn't for the ASB, there'd be no need there. That would be a cost savings to the unrestricted general fund of $194,993. Eliminate outside mandated cost preparation consultants. Several years ago, the state started suspending mandated cost reimbursements, even though we're ultimately due to receive those sometime in the future with interest. We don't see that on the horizon, but we continue to pay out. I think what we'll do is we'll try and absorb that. Once again, there's an organizational capacity issue, but as you can see, if we did that, there's a savings of $68,300. Eliminate outside medical administrative activities. Claim preparation consultant, also called a MA. As you know, MA will come to an end at the end of the fiscal year 2009. We actually have had an unrestricted general fund expense to do the claims preparation. That can go away, $50,000. Suspend deferred maintenance contribution for fiscal year nine, ten. We can do this in the elementary because we actually have an ending balance that we can draw from. As you know, the state provided us a number of means of latitude in the budget. One of them was suspending the deferred maintenance contribution, and we have that ability for four years. We're going to take advantage of that this year, $216,000 at one time. Reduce independent auditor's fees. Last year, the board directed me to circulate an RFP with respect to hiring a new independent auditor. One of the unintended and beneficial consequences of that, it was a reduction in fees. We didn't take credit for it. We're taking credit for it now. Recognize rate reduction for property and liability insurance for fiscal year nine, ten. Once again, we changed property and liability insurance carriers last year. We're looking at a rate reduction for property and liability insurance of $47,138. Recycle. Actually, the title was, I think, a holdover from last year, but what it really should say is increased recycling efforts. The city is actually proposing a rate structure that'll provide an incentive for those who divert the vast majority of their waste to recycling. If we can achieve 66% level for those sites within the city, we can increase our cost savings by $65,800. We're at 44% right now. One of the ideas that came from the sites, although we've been studying it, was this idea of power management, especially with regard to centrally controlling computer labs and shutting them down. One of the things we were astounded by over spring break and also winter break, I should say winter break, is that the number of computers just left on. There's software that'll allow us to shut down or power down those computer labs remotely. Looking at basically a cost savings of about $75 per computer with over 3,000 computers, we think conservatively we can save about $75,000. Moving on to potential administrative and administrative support reductions. There'll be an effort here to reduce assistant principal assignments at the junior highs. Currently, our AP assignments are staffed at a student enrollment of 500 to 1. We can reduce two positions by 20 to 40%. We could redistribute some of that under the Tier III categorical flexibility. We're still analyzing that, but we think that's doable. And one assistant principal has requested a partial leave of absence for 40% time. We're going to eliminate six teachers on special assignments, the TOSs. There's one in the elementary, five in the secondary district, and I believe a couple of those at the district office. Eliminate stipends for special assignments. We have some historical practices that basically need to be stopped where actually administrators were asked to do things and given stipends and basically that needs to be terminated. Eliminate expense of leased classrooms and administrative support for homeschool Santa Barbara. As you know, we entered into a lease agreement with Hope School District when we thought we were going to be staying in revenue limit and there was actually an incentive to basically have more students in the elementary district. Now, given the level of budget constraints we're dealing with, it does not make any sense to basically shell out $29,000 a year for buildings that really are not going to be served that type of purpose. Also, there is some ancillary administrative support expense that we can do away with. We believe about $10,000 in reduction there for a total of $39,000. Moving on to potential program reductions. This is not a new item. As we know, the cost of staffing San Marcos is significantly higher than it is at the other two comprehensive high schools. Basically, we use a staffing formula at the other two comprehensive high schools of 35 to 1. San Marcos has been operating at 31 to 1. Last year, we negotiated a deal on a one-year basis of 33 to 1, but at this point in time, we believe that we have to achieve full parity and we have to do that on an ongoing basis. We've worked both with the site and SBTA, and I believe that we're going to schedule another meeting with San Marcos site to talk about what can be done. But this is a significant issue here, as I mentioned in the plan assumptions. This is one of those issues. If it's not negotiated and it's not implemented, then we're going to be looking at about $663,000 worth of expenditure reductions somewhere else on the list. Eliminate ninth grade class size reduction English. This is a peculiarity of the Tier III categorical flexibility. As you recall, last year, there was a reduction in ninth grade class size reduction math. It used to be that you'd have to offer English prior to offering math, but remember with the Tier III categorical flexibility, the program requirements are suspended. So, now you could actually do things in reverse order here. So, with the advent of categorical flexibility in the Tier III programs, there's no longer requirement that school districts offer the program in English prior to offering it in math. As a result, it's possible to reduce or eliminate ninth grade English and still apply for funding from the state in math. The industry standard is basically to make categorical programs self-sufficient and self-contained. Right now, we're looking at an encroachment of $240,0074. That's why we're seriously looking at it. Eliminate secondary AB-18 counselors. One of the issues that kind of was an unintended consequence of doing this analysis is that when we started looking at the counseling issue, it wasn't apparent to me that we had at least three counselors that were being paid out of AB-1802 carryover. So, the issue is, is with AB-1802, the funds got here late, so there was a delayed implementation and basically some of the hires were hired out of dollars that won't be on an ongoing basis. So, at least three of those positions are basically funding this year in carryover. I know there was an issue relative to basically the deficit that's going to be applied because it's a Tier III categorical, but this is a whole nother issue. And so, when we started looking at not only the amount of money that's going to be reduced due to the deficit, but the fact that three of them, three of those positions would actually no longer have a designated funding source, we thought we'd bring that to the board's attention. It's $270,101. Eliminate second grade gifted and talented education. Right now, our GATE program is either an attendance area or basically some, our students can enter district, transfer to another school district, or they can go to the self-contained classroom at Washington Elementary School. There's some question about the validity and reliability of identifying students as early as second grade. The approximate cost of second grade consumable test is $3,500 a year. And also, the number of second grade students who qualify GATE identification has not been large enough to fill the third grade GATE class at Washington due to its capacity of 20 students. This caused an approximate annual cost of $26,700 for a total of $30,200. Eliminate all classified employee stipends not contained in collective bargaining agreements. The district's currently spent a substantial amount of money for classified stipends. These classified employees currently do not have a negotiated bargaining unit stipends, and most of the stipends have been independently arrived at by site administrators, which creates equity and uniformity problems across the district. We're working with CSDA to basically resolve this issue and provide some kind of uniformity, but we believe by just eliminating the practice, since it's not negotiable, we can save right off the bat, I shouldn't say not negotiable, not included in a collective bargaining agreement, that it's $41,561 savings to the district. Cap the co-curricular stipends contained in the collective bargaining agreement. It's suggested that the district place a cap on the number of staff the district will pay for each negotiated certificated co-curricular stipend out of the unrestricted fund. This is a practice that really needs to be tightened up. It hasn't been controlled in the past. We have basically no rhyme or reason to how it's been carried out over the last several years. We know that contractually we're required to perform certain obligations, but the way it's being implemented in the field really needs to be retooled. We think by doing that, we can save $75,426. Discontinue freshman athletics at each high school. Obviously, other districts have done this. When we started looking at the stipend list, we know there are about 70 coaches, 17 coaches for freshman-level athletics. If we actually eliminated that, there would be about $61,980 in savings. However, there's some question about whether those students could be folded back into the master's schedule without additional expense to the district. Reduce classified support staff proportional to enrollment decline. This really dealt with the health assistant year, health assistant issue that the board grappled with last year. We actually negotiated this last year, but the implementation date, because we had to negotiate it over the course of year, will actually be effective for nine, 10, and the district will basically accrue a savings of $43,507. Require students to make up absences for truancy and/or discipline with Saturday school. Currently, Santa Barbara High School is the only comprehensive high school that runs Saturday school and generates credit while apportionment. We're asking the other two and possibly the junior highs to do the same. Increase K3 class size average to 25 to 1. In addition to the Tier III flexibility that was included in the state's budget, there was also flexibility given to K3 class size reduction. There's actually a couple constraining factors, though, and those are these. One, you don't actually arrive at the net savings of basically just raising class size because there's a revenue penalty associated with ascending intervals in the continuum. So, basically, what I mean by that is if you were just going to raise class size, it would be easy to just calculate the staffing ratios and see what this cost savings would be. But right now, we get $1,071 per student, K3. If you increase by, you know, I don't, I'm going to have to go to my template here. If you increase between 20.45 average and 21.45, there's like a 5% penalty on your revenue. The next step, there's like a 10. The next step, there's like a 15%, and so on and so on. So, it dilutes the savings to some extent. Obviously, I'm sure we're going to have more discussion about this, but I just wanted the board to know it wasn't a straight savings, and that's why the numbers look so peculiar, where you think, well, hey, if we increase class size, wouldn't it generate more than this because, you know, if the average teacher comp is $85,000, what's going on? And the reason is actually twofold. One is you're taking the revenue penalty, and remember, you're not getting the $1,071 per student for any student that's above the 20 to 1. So, if you put 25 students in a classroom, you're only getting the $1,071 for the first 20, and then you're taking the revenue hit on that, and then basically you're getting no incentive funding above and beyond the 20. And then last but not least, require all certificated administrat- And then last but not least, require all certificated administrators to substitute three days a year. We have 43 certificated administrators, both at the site and district level. If we basically ask them to contribute three days of substituting a year, looking at a rate of $105 a day, that would save us about $13,544. In addition to those items, there's items that we looked at relative to additional analysis in the long-term health, and you can walk through it. One of the items that probably needs to be moved up for consideration based on comments I've received is itemized on page 23, and that's eliminate athletic trainers at each comprehensive high school. Right now, we spend about 100, close to $170,000 on athletic trainers, one at each of the comprehensive high schools, and that's been moved on to the list for consideration as well. So the plan lays out a variety of options, about 4.1 million in potential reductions. The board needs to arrive at $3 million in expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions. The plan actually sets forth, the plan actually does two things. One, it gives you some variety and some flexibility in looking at that, and it also tries to comprehensively address questions that were raised by stakeholders. When you look at the second portion of the plan, what we tried to do is almost on a Q&amp;A format, is we know there were suggestions that just aren't feasible because they're not legal, or they're negotiable, or they're not politically viable, but we thought it was incumbent on us to address every single comment we got and try and put it in the plan. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Board members, shall we take public comment on this first? How many do we have?
Six.
Seven, all right. We will close to public comment, and we will go ahead and get started with that then. Mr. Herron.
Okay, we have Mrs. Jarnell, Mr. Shapiro, followed by Abe Nandan.
I'm here to talk about the possibility of eliminating the second-grade gate testing. I'm actually the third-grade gate teacher at Washington School. I currently have 24 students in my third-grade class. Rather than stopping at 20 this school year, the district, whoever allowed 24 students in my class because of that overwhelming interest to be in that program. This coming year, we already have tested in 17 students from Washington already, and that's to begin with into our program, and at least seven students have already come by this week, showing interest in transferring over to Washington from other schools for next year's third-grade gate class. The $26,700, which pays for a teacher, is obviously a moot point because the program is flourishing. There is a teacher, there is a class. Therefore, we are left debating about $3,500, which is approximate cost of testing incoming second graders. This $3,500 amount will not make a big enough impact on the district's financial woes. I believe we should be celebrating the overwhelming success of this third-grade gate program rather than worrying about a savings of $3,500. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
I would like to just make a comment that the emails I've received, you are very, very special, so thank you very much. Mrs. Shapiro, followed by Abe Nandan.
My name's David Shapiro. I represent an organizing group of parents in opposition to the proposal Y of, a letter Y of decreasing, or eliminating the testing for second-grade grade that Mrs. Jarnell was talking about. Specifically, the city lists, or the district lists three reasons, only one of which, interestingly, is budgetary. The other two seem to be more political in nature, but the three that are listed are first, the cost savings of $3,500 for testing plus a mysterious figure of $26,700 beyond that. The second reason is a question about the validity of successfully identifying students in the second grade to become accurately for the gate program. And the other reason was the comparative reason that Montecito Union, Cold Springs, Goleta do not start their gate into fourth grade. And I'd like to show that a careful analysis of each of these shows them to be specious. I think there really isn't a valid reason to eliminate, certainly from a budgetary context, there's no reason to really target this particular group of special-needs children. And this does seem to be, or at least feels to me, like a sort of targeted at these special-needs students. Now, in terms of the cost issue, I think Mrs. Jarnell was right on the nose, right on the money. The $3,500 cost is true to test. The fact that the gate class was not full in the past few years is sort of vaguely referenced, but if we look at the history of the gate program, it started in 1993. It's been in place for 15 and a half years. The first two years, it was a three, four, and a four, five combo class, and then after that, it went, because of the overwhelming demand, went to four separate classes, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. It's been full every single year except for last year at 15 students, year before that at 17 students, year before that at 19 students. It's important to note, that time at Washington School was a time of tragedy and turmoil. We went through four principals, had one principal death. It was not really an accurate assessment of what the culture is at Washington School. And with Mr. Barnett taking over, we've now had complete enrollment in gate class. The currently 17 students from Washington have tested into the gate for next year. A current gate class, which my daughter is in, has 24 students, we see this as something that will continue to grow in the future. And to single out three years during a particularly difficult time at Washington is somehow statistically emblematic of what happens that seems unfair and unreasonable. In terms of the other reasons, briefly, I think the fact that if students can't be successfully identified in the second grade, that speaks more to the methodology and that just suggests that there should be improved methodology. Be like eliminating college because SAT is not felt to be a good test or a good metric. In terms of comparatives to other schools, other California schools don't necessarily form a good metric.
Fifteen seconds.
If we look at outside of California, New York, Oregon, Ohio, other schools start gate as early as kindergarten. So to use fourth grade as a baseline is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, I'd like to hand a petition, I'd like to hand, this is a petition we gathered today, just very briefly, before school and after school, of over 50 signatures of parents, not just gate parents, but parents from at Washington School, this isn't even from other schools, who are opposed to this kind of targeting of the gate program. And then we also have individual letters, some of which you've received as emails. But I think the overwhelming sentiment in our group of parents is, I think, representative of that, is strongly against this and something we'd be very opposed to seeing implemented. Thank you.
And thank you all for grouping together. We appreciate that. Abe Nandan, followed by Lisa Fell, followed by Ms. Pomerantz.
Hi. Abe, Dan, and I are the three athletic directors at the three high schools, and we have some concerns about some of the things that you have on your list. We understand that you have to make some tough choices, but we'd like to give you our idea of where things are. I'm going to start with the athletic trainers that we have. I don't know that you understand that each high school has approximately 1,000 athletes, so they're treating for injury prevention, injury treatment, which they work with the doctors with, and emergency treatment. They do all of those things for us. They also help in earthquake drills, and they have a group of kids at two of the schools that are actually in a training program that help at the earthquake drills as well, so there be people that are injured or hurt. Each school has hundreds of games a year. I'm talking literally hundreds of games. Those athletic trainers are on call. You can call them if you have a problem. I know at our school, we're talking about yesterday, we had a kid who dislocated his kneecap to the point that it was almost on the back of his knee, and our trainer was there. Abe had somebody at San Marcos that got hit with a line drive with a baseball in the eye. The trainers are there. All of our coaches have first aid and CPR, like many of you do, but we're not really in a position to be able to help somebody that's in that situation. Okay? So they're going to talk to you about a couple of other things now.
We're talking about the elimination of the freshman athletics, and I'm just going to talk from a parent's point of view. The parents wish for their kids to connect, be constructive, and busy. Practices last until late. Kids are tired, and it helps with keep the student athletes out of gangs and other unhealthy activities. Sports increases self-esteem, friends, and encouragement by coaches in the classroom. At our three high schools, every single one of our athletic teams, all 66 varsity teams from the three high schools, had a 3.0 or better in a non-weighted GPA. That's amazing. It's never happened before. Grades are higher during the season, and the coaches are role models for the students. Student athletes manage to compete, practice, and keep their grades up. Lessons are learned every day, how to win, how to lose, how to pick yourself up, and try again.
My name is Dan Feldhous, and I'm the athletic director at Just Publis, and I just wanted to comment on some of the things that Mr. Smith talked about. Today, we had opportunity to add up how many ninth graders actually participate in our athletic programs, and today, we came up with a number of 800, about 847 ninth graders participate in our athletic programs for this school year. Mr. Smith talked about the possibility of rolling those back into the general classes or into possible PE classes. Let me kind of crunch the numbers a little bit. 847 equates to about 21 sections or classes that these students...
Excuse me one second. Can we give them an extra minute since there's three of them? Okay.
Thank you. So we came up, it's going to, these freshmen, if they're not playing sports, they're probably going to have to go into other classes, and it's going to need about 21 sections to cover these students. With the $61,000 proposed savings for freshman athletics would be basically the cost of staffing 21 sections based on numbers would be about $240,000. So basically, freshman athletics is a great bargain, and it would be a tough thing to take away, not only from the school, but from the parents and the athletes as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fell, followed by Ms. Pomerantz, followed by Mr. Wheeler.
Hi. I'm speaking again on the letter Y, eliminating the second-grade gate assessment testing. And I have a fifth grader in the gate class right now at Washington, and every year, I volunteer in the classroom, and I witness these kids and how they're learning, and in kindergarten all the way through, I see the difference between the K through second grade class, and then I see them get into third grade, and they're in this gate class. And these are special-needs kids. They, I mean, the whole reason we have this gate program is so that they get taught at the level that they need, and it does make a difference having them in the third-grade class. I've seen it. It's crucial. It's not worth eliminating, making them wait a whole extra year. These kids really need it at that time. I've seen it. I've got many, many parents who stand behind, who agree with me, and you've seen it from the 50 signatures in just one day. I'm sure they could get so many more. And the only guaranteed cost savings is 3,500. The rest is all speculative. It's not guaranteed. You were seeing it go up, so 3,500, such a small amount for the impact it would have on these kids. It's really not worth it. Thank you.
Ms. Pomerantz, followed by Mr. Wheeler, followed by Ms. Knight.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm here to talk about the gate program and the impacts that eliminating second-grade testing would have. First of all, I'd just like to underscore everything that was already said by our Washington families that have current children in the gate program. I'd like to shed light, possibly from a different perspective. I have a second grader that just tested in two weeks ago into the gate program. She, along with six other of her classmates, also tested in. I've had the good fortune this year, working with April Van Wickel, who's an exemplary teacher, of working with these seven children on a weekly basis. And I can tell you that these children are not only amazing, but it is difficult at best with such an amazing teacher to keep each child's plate spinning in a way that is engaging, that is creative, that is beyond the giving them the extra credit at the end of their homework pack. These children need stimulation. They need a special class. As Lisa said, they are special-needs children. And I just implore you to really consider, reconsider, consider what you, how you might vote in the next week's impacting this program. And I also will just mention that I, my little guy that I talked about earlier, my kindergartner, he also shows very classic gate attributes, and to think that he would not have the opportunity to test in in second grade is just crazy. So I would just, again, just ask that you think about keeping not only our families together, which is what I spoke on earlier, but also just to think of the special needs of all of our children, the gay kids and the ones on a different spectrum. Thank you.
Mr. Wheeler, followed by Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, Senator of Teachers Association. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for putting these together in a very readable and understandable way. Very simple message, make the cuts as far from classrooms and as far from students, families, and teachers as you can. 65, 67 teachers rift, 125 teachers told that they wouldn't be rehired next year, the temporaries. Some massive impact on our community, a massive impact on families, a massive impact on students. Make the cuts as far away from the classroom as you can. There seems to be some very obvious cuts here. There will be some very difficult choices to make, and I'm asking you to certainly do that in a very judicious way. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the possible reduction in gate testing, and I'm also here to advocate for the parents and the students who may not, is that from the phone? Ah! Who may not know right now that they have a gifted child and who could be losing an opportunity that they don't even realize exists yet for their child. And I want to share a personal story. My son, Evan Knight, he's now nine. He's an energetic, bright, curious boy, and we put him through a very fine preschool to give him every advantage, but by the end of second grade, it was very clear that the system was failing him. Instead of being lauded for being, you know, bright and doing well in his class, he was labeled as a troublemaker, quite frankly, because he was not challenged. He was bored, and he's a very active child. There was not the resources in the school to keep someone with his special needs occupied, and as a result, he became disengaged. His self-esteem plummeted, and he started saying that he no longer wanted to go to school. And as a parent with a bright child, I mean, it's just heartbreaking, it's alarming to see that happen to your child. When Evan was gate identified, it made us realize, oh, okay, well, perhaps this is what's going on. We were in the Roosevelt School District, love that school. We looked at the pull-out program, and there again, it would not serve his needs. It was frankly just more of the same teaching style, larger classroom, no chance for, to delve into subjects from a conceptual basis for discussion and exploration of ideas, which is really what a lot of these kids need. We went to visit Mrs. Jarnell's class, and within 20 seconds, I just knew that's where Evan needed to be. We live at the corner of Los Canoas and Mountain Drive. Twice a day, we drive across town to Washington School so that our son can attend this program. It is so important to us. It's so important to him. He is thriving now. He has a wonderful peer group. Even though he's not the top of the class, he's in the middle of his class now. He loves that. He's challenged. His interest in art and music is...
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Is flourishing because he's inspired by the other children in his class. And I asked him this evening, what do you think would have happened if you stayed at your old school? And he said, I would be dumb now.
Oh, boy.
So please, please, really look hard at this program.
Thank you very much.
Board discussion. I'm sure that as we've gone through, you've all seen ones that are not controversial, and then you have your list of ones that you've circled or checked that are controversial, that you may want to share your thoughts on. So... So I'm just going to call on you, board member by board member, and have you run through your list, and otherwise it would be really hard to go from item to item, if you see what I'm saying. So-
Madam President.
Yes.
We have a spreadsheet.
Yeah, exactly. So you can refer to that and pull out your item numbers that you would particularly like to talk about. So Dr. Noel, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate the comments from the members of the audience. I always like to remind myself and others that budgets are about values and priorities, they give tangible expression to what we think is important and what we think is less important. And that includes budget recommendations. The budget recommendations embody value judgments and priorities, and I have long been concerned that I, that we as board members are presented with recommendations rather than a set of trade-offs, rather than seeing everything on the table. Now, this is a pretty extensive set, and almost everything that I can imagine be on the table is here, but there is even, in what we, I don't know whether the public's seen it or not, but what we have received is prioritized in one sense or another, there's one set of items, for example, that are called things that are too, I forget the word, considered but would not probably yield savings in the, cost savings in the short run. Some of the things I think are important are on that list, and I liked, I would like to see them on the table so that we could say, okay, is this worth a counselor? Is this worth thirty thousand dollars to keep the GATE program whole? And, and I, you know, and I'd like to, like to, I will try to argue on that as we proceed. I do have some specifics. There's one item that talks about raising the fees for use of school facilities under the public, what do you call it?
Civic Center Act.
Civic, Civic Center Act. And that's California law that says that all school facilities have to be made available to the public under certain conditions, with some restrictions for use, but that they have to be made available at cost effectively, what it costs to maintain them and have them used. So we have a rate structure for the various facilities, and that includes particularly swimming pools, athletic fields, classrooms, auditoriums, and so on. There's one that we never include, and that's the auditorium at Santa Barbara Junior High School, and I've always been troubled by this, and that's because that auditorium is singled out and brought under a memorandum of understanding with a nonprofit in Santa Barbara, and the nonprofit rents that out at a rate that it sets, and the district doesn't collect a rate for that. In fact, the district pays the employees, two employees for that, who are, who maintain it, unlike any other auditorium in the district. It gets reimbursed for the salaries but not for the benefits. And I've always been troubled by this, and the question I want to ask, and I would hope we get an answer before we have to vote on these items, is does this nonprofit make a profit on the use of that auditorium? And how do we justify charging, I don't know how much we, how much that organization charges for the Santa Barbara Junior High Auditorium, but substantially more than we charge for the Lacumbre Auditorium, for example, which is a pretty nice and large auditorium. That's a, the suggestion now is to raise that to a hundred-and-sixty-five bucks an hour. I would think that at least, if we're talking about raising the rates and getting fair, fair reimbursement for the use, for the costs of using those facilities, that we should have it equitable, and I've always been troubled by the twenty thousand dollar a year subsidy that goes to paying the benefits for the, for these people, that's unique in the district. And I immediately think of twenty thousand dollars that I would like to see go for some of the things that I mentioned earlier. I am the person who put the athletic trainers, who suggested that they be, that they take some of the hit. I believe we should have to share the pain, we have to spread the pain around, and I've been on the board long enough to remember when we, when we had no athletic trainers. And in fact, at that time, the high school district was rolling in money, and the idea of providing trainers to cover the games was not all that painful. I think we, at the time, voted something like forty thousand a year per high school. And what I say now is if, and I know that you can make the case that it lowers risk and does all kinds of things, but lots of schools don't have them, and we got along for decades without them, and again, I want to see that cost put up next to some of the other possible items that are up for cuts. So those are, that kind of summarizes my philosophy, and it summarizes, or it points out a couple of items that I particularly am interested in. I, incidentally, I want to say this because I appreciate very much both the superintendent and Mr. Smith having included some of my suggestions, on a higher priority side too, and not, to be fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Mrs. Deegan?
Okay, first of all, Dr. Noel, you weren't the only one who, whose attention was caught by the athletic trainers. And however, I do, I understand the important role they play, however, you know, one of the difficult parts about this job is realizing that if you cut someone's job, you may in fact save someone else's and vice versa, and so that's incredibly difficult, but to dive in with the counselors, I mean, we know that they're serving the entire student population, and so personally, that's one area where I would definitely like to see us save as many jobs as we can, and we may not be able to save all of them, but that's certainly an area that I think we need to look carefully at. Just going through the list here, the parent pay transportation, as nice as it sounds, it's pretty unlikely. I'm sure everyone has drawn that conclusion, I'd love to bring in that amount of money, but I just don't think people will pay it, and I think they'll end up carpooling, and if we have ten people left, they'll pay the cost of the whole thing, so I don't think that's really an option. But in terms of the Civic Center Act, you know, some of you know that I've been heavily involved in the pools, and so naturally it caught my eye when I saw a twenty percent increase there and only a ten percent increase in the other areas, and so, for the sake of equity, you know, I would like to propose spreading those increases around and maybe compromising at fifteen percent or something like that for all of them. The pool people are already paying much more than everybody else, and ultimately, we have to understand that all the users of our facilities are our students or will be our students, and these costs are passed along to them. So, you know, ultimately, we're asking our students to pay more when we raise those fees. I'm not opposed to it entirely, but I'd like to see some equity there. Moving on to eliminating ninth grade class size reduction, this is something I feel very strongly about, I would not like to see this happen. I think, you know, it was terrific that we were able to reduce class size for the ninth grade English students. We know that Measure H is going to help fund the reducing math classes in the ninth grade, and so I'm not sure whether we use part of the Measure H money for that and then apply for this additional ninth grade math money or not, but I think that we can take care of ninth grade math there. Perhaps we need to look at twenty-five to one or something like that, and we could ask the staff to possibly come up with some numbers, so I definitely would not want to see us go up to thirty-five to one in ninth grade English, I can say that right now. I've already spoken to counselors, I know the other board members will speak to that as well. GATE, you know, I find the arguments we've heard tonight and in the emails pretty persuasive. I have to tell you, for thirty-five hundred dollars, you know, I don't see us gaining a lot, and I do think that the GATE program is a valuable program. What disturbs me a little bit is that our alternative assessment program that helps provide more diversity in our GATE classes doesn't start until the next year, and so if we decide to keep in place what we've got here, I don't know how much work that would be, but I would sure like to see a methodology in place so that we could get more diversity in these GATE classes in the third grade, but I feel strongly about keeping GATE as best we can. I'm definitely opposed to discontinuing freshman athletics, I think, you know, if we look at how many of our students are participating in this, we've got sixty or seventy percent of our ninth graders participating in team athletics. It's a vulnerable year, the ninth grade, these kids come in and they automatically have a peer group that helps them bond to the school and to each other. We know academic achievement and participation in athletics go hand in hand, we've seen that, this is an after-school program, we want to keep our kids busy after school, it's sixty-one thousand dollars, so I think I would really like to see that stay. In terms of class size reduction, or, sorry, increasing class size K through three, unfortunately, I think it's something we really have to look at. I don't think there's any way around that. As a group, maybe we can hit a target, but I think that that's something that we absolutely need to do. And I skipped over, sorry, staffing all high schools at parity, I think we have to do this. I mean, I really don't see how we can avoid it, I know that the block program is valued at San Marcos, but I also think that it's a matter of equity, really, that we can't ask our teachers at the two other high schools to teach at thirty-five to one and not the teachers at San Marcos. And I know it's going to take some work to figure out how to make that work, but I think ultimately, it's just something that we have to do, and it's such a huge savings that, you know, it's a place we can't not go to. So I'll stop there, because I know we all have a lot to say.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I'm trying to figure out sort of how to, how to get us somewhere with this, because I think we can all go down the line and say, you know, I think we should look at this one and not that one.
Well, I say this is a, yeah, initial discussion, and next week is where we can-
Well, what I was hoping is that maybe we could, first of all, kind of sweep those ones that we all pretty much agree. There are, you know, a few on page eight, page nine, well-
How about if you took it, if you look at your list at the end and just give the numbers, or, I mean, sorry, the letters?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that we don't have to browse through.
Point of information.
Yes, Dr. Noel.
I don't know whether this would be, I guess I'll ask you, are we moving towards doing kind of a straw vote implicitly?
No.
Because that-
No, I do not want to do that tonight.
Oh, we can't, it's illegal.
Right.
You know, one of the things we can do, if you're in agreement, because I have to show off our new technology and hopefully it'll work, if you run down, we can show you a cumulative total.
See, that's what I was wanting to get to. If there are certain ones that most of, that we generally agree, we think are pretty non-controversial, it would be nice to get a subtotal on those, and then look at what we have left to grapple with, because, you know, there are some of the ones disconnecting unnecessary telephone lines that I think-
We can just do that.
You know, we're not gonna, that's not gonna be pretty, that's not gonna really be-
How do board members feel about that? Are you willing to talk about the most non-controversial ones and, Mr. Herron?
In fairness, two members have already talked about the issues that they're concerned with. It might be wise to have us all talk about the ones we're concerned with, because I think we all have different ideas.
Well-
And so after all five of us give what concerns us, we might then do that.
Okay.
But I think we each should have the right to talk about issues that we-
Okay, well then let me just quickly hit the ones that I, I guess we're all sort of focusing on the ones we think we would not want to see cut.
Or maybe not fully cut.
Or not fully cut. Well, I agree with Ms. Deegan that the parent pay for transportation is somewhat unrealistic. I mean, there, I think there might be some discussion, excuse me, about a partial payment, but seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars a year is really an unrealistic amount to expect parents to be able to pay. So I think that's pretty much out of the question. I actually want to say, want to support athletic trainers, having had, you know, two sons who played varsity sports, and even freshmen and junior varsity, et cetera. The fact that the trainers, the trainers are there and available for student athletes, and as was pointed out by the A.D.s, also available in other circumstances as well, I think it's a student safety issue. So I actually want to support that, I would like to support the freshman athletics. I also agree, though, that staffing the schools at parity is a key issue because of the amount that we're looking at. Some of these issues, some of these items only save us small amounts, and we have to do many, many, many of them in order to accumulate any significant effect. The parity issue is, has the potential to save a great deal of money for the districts. So at the very least, I think we need to pursue that one a little bit more completely to determine whether we can actually account, put it into effect or not. I do, I am quite concerned with the elimination of, or the reduction of counselors, because, again, I think, I'm always concerned that some of the cuts that we make that are sort of general to all students have the potential to affect at-risk students disproportionately, and I really worry about that with the way that we, that those effects might be felt if we were to reduce the number of counselors, at least by the amount that we're looking at at this point. I'm trying to, I think there was one more that I wanted to focus on. There was, I'm sorry, there was the one where we talked about, and I have a question about the percentage that that represents, charging the local donation accounts an indirect cost rate. Do we have a sense of what percentage that represents as indirect costs?
Five-point-one-three percent this year. It's been hovering around four-point-nine, five-point-one-three, so I would say five percent's a good bet over the next couple of years.
Okay. Because I think, depending on what the percentage is, that might be reasonable, and also we might, we could stipulate a percentage, which might not, even if it didn't cover the entire thing, would offset at least some of the cost. So I think-
Yeah, one of the things we played with, which was hard to quantify, hard to simulate, was, you know, do you want to charge five percent on a hundred dollars? So you'd set some kind of tier, and, but we don't know what that tier is, and so I think we're looking to the board for that. But if we charge that across the board, that's what our calculations show, but obviously, you'd want a healthy enough amount to be able to charge against it. And also, that's appropriate, because you'd have much more, you know, bookkeeping and accounting for it as well.
And then there were a couple in here that you, that I think, Mr. Smith, that you identified that we are already doing.
There's several things-
A salpa-
Yeah, the board, on the natural will occur, or the board has taken previous actions, and we're basically, they'll accrue to us starting in nine-ten, but since we look at everything on a multi-year basis, and it reduces the amount of difficult decisions that a board has to make, that's why we thought it was, you know, appropriate to include it in the plan.
Great, thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Herron.
Yes, first, I'd just like to make a comment, because a lot of the emails, reading between the lines, you know, we got this information Friday, this is the first time we got it, so we got it basically the same time the public did, and we don't, we can't talk amongst each other. We can, I haven't talked to anybody up here about these, and will not, because we don't, we're not able to sit around and talk about these things. So this is our time to really talk about these things. We can talk to one other person, but then that person, assuming that person hasn't talked to anybody else, and if we do talk to that one person, they can't talk to anybody else. So my position is I don't talk to anybody, and just myself, and that's dangerous sometimes. And that's dangerous sometimes. You know, so, but, and no decisions have been made. A lot of the emails gave the impression, well, this is all in concrete. And we have no idea where this is going to go at this point, none, none whatsoever. So all of your emails help me come to some conclusions, so I appreciate that. My first one was on the transportation and I just, a lot of my questions, since I'm new, might be evident to others. But there are five hundred and thirty-three students who ride the bus. If you divide that into one hundred and forty-six thousand, that's two hundred and seventy-four dollars each. But sixty-five percent of them can't be charged. So that leaves the seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Is my thinking right that what we're saying is we're going to charge those that can for those that can't? Because if you just took the hundred and eighty-seven into the one forty-six, it'd be something like two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Or, yeah, well, it'd be two seventy-four.
I don't know if you can construe it that way. My experience with parent pay transportation is that there's a long list of items that basically families can claim exemption. And basically, it's very difficult to project how many will actually avail themselves of the exemption. So I took the worst-case scenario.
That's not my question. If you just took the one forty-six by the five thirty-three and charged everybody two seventy-four and then you discount the sixty-five, instead of a hundred and forty-six thousand, that would be a fifty-one thousand dollar savings. But the parents who can pay it are paying exactly their share of that one forty-six and not somebody else's. By doing it the way you're talking about it, the parent who pays is paying not only for theirs, two seventy-four, but they're paying another five hundred dollars for somebody else.
You could look at it that way. I think the idea was, is we have a net encroachment of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And so to totally eliminate the encroachment, that's how you would do it, since you can actually charge the ones that are eligible for exemption.
So we're charging those that can pay more to subsidize those that can't. Okay. I'm not in favor of that. Okay. I don't mind the two seventy-four, but to jump to seven eighty-three, I think that's just a jump. The, oh, the eliminate six teachers on special assignment positions, the TOSSs. Sounds great, but what do they do and what will be missing if we take them away? I mean, what are they currently doing? I mean, is it nonessential stuff and so eliminating them is no problem? Or do they do something worthwhile that's going to have to be replaced?
I think you could make that argument for everything on the cut list.
Well, what, I mean, what, who are the six TOSSs? What is, what do they do?
Well, there's one in the elementary, there's two at the district office, and there's three out at the sites, at the conference of high school sites.
And what do they do?
Do you want to address that, Robin?
The one at the elementary is one of our English language development teachers on special assignment. This is our third year in full implementation of that program. So the plan is that by eliminating this, because, as you know, it's very hard to find things in the elementary district. So we're looking at everything, that's why the gate thing and everything else is on there. So every little thing imaginable. This person would potentially be working at the sites through the site categorical funding. So the sites that need the ELD support the most could be, so the service in that case could still be going on in a different way. The two that are at the district office are in special education.
Okay.
And so they've been supporting that program this year.
With the new structure.
With the restructure, it could, we've got other positions in place. The other three at the high schools have differing roles, supporting not really an AP, not really like an AP position, but those types of positions in, for instance, the one at D.P. works with this group of students who are more at risk, works with teachers. So each position's slightly different.
And so their workload will be put onto somebody else, probably the counselors. I have the same comments on staffing high schools at parity as everyone else. Eliminate ninth-grade class, sounds strange to me. In your write-up on counselors, you had some new language there that I haven't seen before. Can you make sure we get a copy of that so I can understand?
Yeah, we'll have that revision prior to the twentieth and it might already be out here, I'm not sure, but we'll have that for you. Basically, the issue is that a portion of those counselors are actually being funded by carryover amounts.
Now, do the ten counselors in that document relate to the three permanent and the seven temporary that we had talked about two weeks ago? Or are those ten a different, is that a different subset of the counselors?
I'll get back to you. I want to be accurate on that, so.
So the question is, we've given three permanent and seven temporary.
Right.
Now, if we, now we're up to ten temporary and three permanent, that's a different equation. You know, the counselors and what they do, I mean, that's something very serious that we have to look at and really understand that whole thing. Because my first impression wasn't like it's wrong, is that you have, you're going to eliminate ten counselors and you save two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You know, that's twenty-seven thousand dollars a counselor, that's a pretty good deal. But that's not how it works.
No, there's actually, there's actually two issues. There's the five hundred to one that actually existed prior to the implementation of A.V. eighteen oh-two, and that's one issue that was in the original write-up. But as kind of an unintended consequence of doing our research, we found that several of these, or at least three of these positions were tied to carryover, which will be exhausted, so.
Okay. So, I mean, that's one that's going to take a lot of thought. Any more information you can give us on that would really be helpful because I think that's going to be one of the hardest ones to come down with a decision on. On the truancy, San Barbara High School currently recaptures five thousand plus dollars. And you're looking at additional sixty-three hundred, if I read this correctly. How much do we lose because of truancy? I mean, if I recall, the last report was three million dollars or something like that?
No, no.
Okay.
We could probably get that data if it's coded in the system. Davis, do we use a truancy code in our attendance accounting?
Well, yeah. Yeah, yes, we can get that data about the truancy. I will say that the truancy data that you saw was not exactly the same that the district has in terms of truancy throughout the schools.
Okay, maybe I'm not using the correct term. Is truancy the same as an absence in school? I mean.
An unauthorized absence.
Unauthorized absence.
How's that?
Yeah.
But you remember, since we actually use actual attendance accounting, anytime anybody's gone, we lose money. So as the counselors so appropriately identified, I think they actually had the per-day, you know, loss for a student absence correct in the secondary district. So we could arrive through the system at how many students were true and then calculate at times that daily rate.
I'm just curious, is what percentage is eleven thousand dollars of that number? I mean, it sounds insignificant. You'd think we might be able to get more than that.
Well, one of the issues there is you've got to remember, when you run a Saturday school program, to basically make it eligible for a portion, it's got to be four hours and it has to be under the supervision of a certificated staff member. So it's not as easy as it seems, so.
And the only other thing is Washington, and I'll just say right now, that's going to be the last thing on my list, so.
Thank you. And I will run through quickly myself. I had the same concerns about the local donation accounts, item C, just that that rate be quite low. Because if it's not quite low, I think people will donate to the PTA's and foundations instead. And so it's fine to do that, but these numbers will not be accurate. Again, with the Institute Parent Pay Transportation, and I think another key thing is that the numbers assume that those five hundred and thirty-three kids represent the overall demographic of the district and they don't.
Right.
It's probably ninety percent or more are low income, not sixty-five percent. And so I think even if you charged a more reasonable rate, it would end up being such a small number to those few parents that could pay that it's probably not reasonable. Then, jumping down to item R, reducing assistant principal assignments at the junior high schools. The one thing I want to comment on that is that I do think that our junior highs are more successful in some ways because they're appropriately staffed at their levels for APs at the five hundred to one. And I think that our high schools struggle because they're not staffed at that level. But this obviously is not actually eliminating APs beyond the one that wants to take some time off. And my question on that is, is it possible to do the same thing for the high school APs? To transfer some of their, of the cost of their salaries to categoricals, to the tier-three categoricals?
Yeah, if, tier-three, if we move them from the restricted to the unrestricted, otherwise we run into some planning issues. So we'd have to do some analysis to look at that and see if that was, if there was ability to pay, so to speak.
V, staff all comprehensive high schools at parity. I can only echo what the other members have said in that I think that this will be very difficult, but that it is, everything is a trade-off in this district and that this is something critical that we have to look at. W, eliminate ninth-grade class size reduction. Again, I think it's a shame for us to be looking at English Language Arts the year that we're bringing math back because of the parcel tax, Measure H. And so like Mrs. Deacon, I would hope that maybe instead of going from twenty to one to thirty-five to one, that there was something that we could meet in the middle, maybe both for English and for math, so that there's some equality there. The counseling ratio, that, you know, that's where I would like to keep it as low as possible. So I hope that we have some flexibility there. The eliminating second-grade gate identification assessment. I think actually one of the more disturbing things that I got in the emails was how few parents were having their children's needs met K-two. And gifted does not happen in, after you're identified through some test. It happens for most kids, it's evident right when they've started school. So that's sort of a side thing. I'm very worried about that because kids should not suffer through three years of not being engaged in school. I think it's unfortunate that people seem to need the label. But it's, it's true. You know, it's a current fact, I would say, in this district. And I, I think that the thirty-five hundred dollar cost for second-grade gate testing is probably negligible to the district and is something that we should continue to do. However, I know that there are, it's actually hard when you're looking at the third-grade gate class at Washington in particular. It's hard to look at long-term trends there because until just the past three or four years, it was not a one-hundred percent gate self-contained class. High-achieving kids were put in there to make up the numbers. There were a lot of problems around that. It was eliminated, and it was about the time that it was eliminated that suddenly it dropped down to below the staffing ratio. So, and then there are effects also on the other classes at Washington, staffing the other classrooms. So, Ms. Waskey, I don't know if you could address that. What happens at Washington for third grade when you have a class-size cap?
Well, what happens at Washington, as people have said here and you alluded to, has been really different every year since I've been here. But if you look at the, one of the things that's not really explained in here is that when you have your twenty to one and you've got kindergarten, first and second grade moving along, and at Washington, we have four of those classes at each one of the grade levels. So you've got eighty kids moving along in the twenty to one, which is very strict as far as being able, we have to get to twenty and we have to keep it at twenty, and we can't go over or we get penalties. This year, we do have over, and that's also a kind of an anomaly because of the HOPE situation late in the year and other things. So we lost money this year on that, but that's another issue, again, an outlier thing. So you've got the eighty kids moving forward and then you get to third grade. And if you, let's say, at the, in the Washington second-grade classroom, there are a group of students who do get identified as gifted and talented and they, that's the only option at that school. So they will go into that class. This year, there could be seventeen because they've been identified, they probably will go there, they don't have any other option. But sometimes there's twelve, sometimes there's ten, whatever. You never know from year to year how many. So you fill one of the third-grade classrooms, you've got four, eighty kids moving up. You fill one of them with those students and then you invite other students from the rest of the district to fill that class to twenty. Well, then you've got over sixty kids that are moving forward into a third-grade, twenty-to-one class size, class situation. So it, the numbers just don't work out well. And in this kind of fiscal situation, we either have to ask those students to leave to go to another school or we have to do what we have in place right now, and option two, which loses money on the class-size reduction piece. So it's, you know, unfortunately, is a fiscal numbers kind of thing. And we didn't want to write all of that in the description, but it's, that's another piece to the issue. I mean, the thirty-five hundred dollars is not much. I mean, second grade is the only grade where there's consumable tests. So there's, there's some, you know, cost involved over the other grade levels. But that's the piece about moving forward with the twenty to one.
Well, my, my, my opinion on that, then, would be that as we're talking about San Marcos, even though this is a much smaller number, that when we talk about the gate program at Washington, that there be sort of a board directive that it doesn't, that it's staffed at parity, essentially. That it is, that it's not cost, that it doesn't cost more. Which may mean that for some years, they may need to not have it be a hundred percent gay kids in that class. Or it may be that they need to, they'll want to have a discussion about, about Washington taking over their third-grade gate program rather than it being a district gate program. But I do want a classroom there to be in place. But I do also think it's important that it be staffed to parity, just like everybody's.
I do have to speak to the guests of gate, that's what it was called. That, that's a really tough thing for an eight-year-old to be able to be in a classroom that, as the parents described, it's a very tight community. I mean, it's a wonderful situation, social situation for the students and the parents. And then the next year, if that's, more students get identified and that student then no longer, our students in this case, no longer are a guest of gate, is what they call them, no longer in that class. It's, I think it's worse than even being able to be in, I don't know. It would just, it didn't work out, it was decided that was not a good situation. So that was the reason.
Well, for fourth grade, then it goes up to thirty to one. But I'm assuming that you're saying that there were years where students.
Had to be told they could no longer be in that classroom because.
Because maybe seven more kids identified that was not one of those children.
Right.
And then a few others tried to transfer in from other schools.
Right.
So it would, it would need to be some sort of way that their space is protected for the entire four years there.
And that could be one of the things that we do.
So that is, that is, that's a solution.
Exactly. There's probably lots of ways to work this.
So that's something to have a discussion with, with the Washington community.
Yes.
What else is on my list? I'm also against discontinuing the freshman athletics at each high school. For the double E, the K-three class size, I hope we don't need to go to twenty-five to one. I hope that we can find something more in the middle. But I do recognize that we probably will need to increase class size. And I appreciate that we probably won't have to go all the way up to twenty-six or twenty-eight or higher. So I'm grateful for what we've already saved with this. And then for the double F, require all certificated administrators to substitute three days a year. That's, again, a very small amount. My concern with this is that we've tended to try to treat our administrators the same as we treat our teachers. And we haven't, when I look at this, what I see is you're asking administrators to basically go on a furlough for three days and instead of getting their regular rate of pay, get the hundred-five dollars a day to substitute rate of pay. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it wasn't generated from the district office.
Okay. I'm just, considering how small the amount of money is in particular, but I'm just a little concerned about treating our administrators different from our teachers.
Wasn't that the savings on substitute teachers?
It's a saving on substitute teachers.
It wasn't, it wasn't a reduction in the salary of administrators to the substitute rate for those.
It's their backfilling for subs.
So they're going to, so instead of doing their, so they're taking a three-day furlough from their admin work.
To be substitutes.
And getting to be substitutes. I think that's a good idea. I'd like to see our administrators in the classroom and I would hope that they would want to be there. Well, I actually think that they spend a fair amount of time in there anyway. Subbing at the last minute a lot, as it is. So, we've run through our lists. If we could not take a straw poll, but just identify the ones that we think are the least controversial, the ones that are, let's just say, not controversial at all. And, and have Mr. Smith use his-
Hetjank, actually.
Mr. Hetjank.
He's at the controls.
At the controls, okay. See what number with, that we get to with that, and then we'll be able to really, hopefully narrow things down next week.
I, I, Madam President, I, I think under any other name, this is winnowing. And that's, and that's a consensual process, that either we vote on it or we don't do it. It just seems to me that we're asking for trouble Brown Act-wise.
Other board members? Um, to me, does this-
I'm sorry, just let me add one thought. Anybody listening can tell where everyone stands on the issues. They're free to summarize it, so is Mr. Smith, so is Dr. Sarvis.
All right, so without any further discussion, Mr. Smith and Mr. Hetjank, I think that you've identified which ones we think are not controversial at all. And the ones that you think that are not controversial at all.
Could I make some comments about that?
I'm sorry, because I thought I had the floor.
Sorry, Mrs. Cordero.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that Dr. Noel has one point of view, but I think there may be other board members who have, certainly I do, have a different point of view. Because I don't see this as winnowing if we simply move, that we're not taking them off the list. We are simply looking at which ones we think are inclined to be non-controversial and tallying those up so that we know what that amount equals. I personally think that ought to be a board directive rather than leaving it to staff to try to determine what, from five different people, what they've heard to be our decision. I, just because we put it on the other list and tally it up, doesn't mean we can't take it off.
My suggestion, actually, in terms of time-saving, would be that, that they put the ones on, because I think that they know which ones are non-controversial. But they put it on there right now, and we can just jump in.
Oh, right now?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
That they put it on there right now, and then we can just shout out if we say, wait, that's a mistake. And that's just, it can be an individual board member's opinion.
I apologize, I thought you were saying do it for our next meeting.
No, 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 right now.
Madam President, I, I did have a, just a question about one that is not clear to me back here in the, eliminate the district's contribution to the cafeteria fund. And that every year dips in, it, it, it loses money and we have to make up for it from the general fund. This paragraph is not clear to me as to- Could you, how much, how much we're losing and whether there's any potential saving by changing the rates or anything like that.
Hold off just a second, Dr. Noel.
I think David doing the opposite. I'd rather you not deal with the ones that are controversial and just deal with the ones non-controversial as a plus, not a minus. I think you're taking ones that you want to take off the table. I think you should put the ones that you want on the table.
I, I, I think the way the spreadsheet works, it counts down to a total. So, we could do it, we can do what you're suggesting, but not mathematically in the way you're suggesting.
I'd rather not be done then.
Yeah, I mean, because then what it's going to show you is what's left. So, because that was the idea.
All right, can we go ahead and finish up with Dr. Noel's question?
Actually, at second interim, the contribution to the cafeteria fund was $383,861, so-
I'm having trouble hearing you.
The contribution to the cafeteria fund or the encroachment was $383,861 at second interim. And actually, I think there's a couple of issues there. One is obviously the chronic underfunding in that program from the state and federal government. Two, we have a new person in there, which I don't think has even been in there a year. It's not really given a chance to turn it around. And three, you know, in accordance with our wellness policy, some of the things we're asking that person to do cost more money than if we just served chicken McNuggets. So, I, I think all those factors. Obviously, we can go look at doing a rate increase, but I'm not sure if the board wants to do that in this climate or not. But, you know, we continue to work on that. But obviously, it's a significant contribution, I, I don't deny that.
Yeah, but that, see, that's my point about values and where these things are in the recommendations. This is back here and not even on the table. Can't we move this up? I mean, sounds, what you just said, sounds like there's flexibility to reduce this $380,000. That's a big piece of change.
It's how you reduce it, though. Are we gonna, I mean, is it going to be reduction in force in staff? Is it going to be an increase in meal prices, which will only affect a very small percentage?
I'd love to have a chance to make that decision. At the same time, I'm asked to consider cutting back gate funding or cutting back counselors, things like that. I'd like to have that as a set of options.
Well, we can go back and bring back some suggestions, but like I said, they're going to come down to reduction in force, they're going to come down to an increase in local meal prices because the state and federal government are decreasing our reimbursement rates. So, I mean, that'll be the trade-off there.
Are you essentially suggesting that you'd like to see that as like a double H on there?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you suggesting that you'd like to see it as a double H on there so that when the board takes action in two weeks, that we could, but, but it couldn't-
I'm not saying lop off the 380,000.
Right, because that would not be possible.
But, you know, I mean, if we could just lop off 80 of the 380, it would go a long way towards saving some of the other things that are in jeopardy.
All right, so-
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I just had an idea. This is an Excel spreadsheet. Is there a way to add an extra cell on the far right where we just put a, a 1 in each category so that we pursue what President Parker was describing, where we identify those things that are non-controversial that we can live with? Does that make sense? Is that useful?
Oh, kind of like a check mark, yeah.
What I would suggest, based on Mrs. Cordero's excellent suggestion, is that we take a five-minute break while they work that out, and come back in five minutes to take a look at what we've got. Break, it is already 10:30. I do want the public to know that we had pulled item F3 and F4 for a later agenda. We'll just spend a very few more minutes. We pulled F3 and F4 from the agenda. I don't know how to make it any louder, I do have the mic on. But, so that will come back to a later agenda. We'll just spend a few more minutes on this. What Mr. Smith has done is just checked off the ones that he felt, that we felt were not controversial. So, you can see the X, the little X next to those.
I can't, uh-
You can't see that?
Well, that, that font is awfully small. Can you do something with that, Mr. Hetjank? Yes, that's a little better. I think we should have a board policy that all slides should be in 16-point type or larger.
Woo, all right, there are those Xs. This, this did not give the, the running total, so we can't see that. However, we can all get our calculators out if we get copies of this and figure that out. Can you just, board members, take a quick look through, and Mr. Hetjank, maybe you could slowly scroll down so that people can see the bottom of the list too, but maybe not quite so fast. So, an A through S, is there anything here that board members-
We didn't talk about J at all, I don't think.
And J was charged the associate, we didn't talk about it, but that is one that I, I would like some further, you know, I would like some conversations around.
Wait, the Xs are the ones that we think are not controversial?
I'm sorry, the Xs are the ones we think are not controversial.
Correct. So, anything in A through S that you think an X should go off of?
Well, I'm wondering about G, what it is, are we-
We, we had a proposal to come back with a 15% across the board, and so, not hearing any other dissenting opinions, that's what we thought we were going to do.
So, we changed it from 10 and 20% to a flat 15%?
That's kind of what we heard.
The reason I'm questioning that one is because, while I, you know, I understand the sort of, at least the ostensible fairness of making it a flat rate, I don't know that the, the actual costs to, you know, to run them or to rent them or whatever are-
Well, what I'm-
Obviously, they're not the same, but, you know, does it make sense to, was there a reason why we had 10% for some of them and 20% for others?
What I think at this point is that just take the X off of that one rather than having a full discussion on it, because it's something that we need to discuss further. So, any other Xs to be removed in the A to S categories?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Cordero?
I, I didn't hear us talk about I, and I have some concerns about I.
Okay, take that X off. Any others, board members, on A through S? All right, let's scroll down and look at T and below. T through double D.
R, I'm sorry, what, did you say?
T through double D.
Okay.
So, it's the ones-
Is there an X by R? I can't see.
R is not there, R, R was up there before, and there is an X next to it.
I don't think there should be an X by R.
All right, take that X off. Anything else here?
T through double V. Well, I, I, just as a matter, is there an X by V?
Yes, there is.
I, I think as a matter of deference to a, a high school faculty and administrators and a lot of parents, that that should not be assumed.
All right, take that X off. Anything else in this section?
On double B, should, is it possible to put an X there?
I would say we could put an X on, you don't want, you don't, you- Double B, which is-
Discontinue freshman athletics.
Is, is that a one-
Are you okay with doing that?
I'm sorry. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what the X recommend, uh-
I think the Xs were supposed to be non-controversial and didn't require further discussion.
We don't want it, if we don't want it to happen, then you need to not have an X on it. Okay, so.
Okay. So, the next X is way down at Z, is that it?
Could we put an X on Y? No, 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 we, if we don't want to do it, then we, we don't, we don't want to put the X there.
I don't want to do 29, so I'm going to say X.
So, no, no, the X means that we want to do it.
It means it's not controversial.
Right, non-controversial that you want to do it.
Non-controversial.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, so, um-
Don't jump that so fast.
All right, so we're sliding down now to-
Back up a little, will you, Mr. Hetjank? Thank you.
Okay, not, yeah, so we should be T down to double D at this point. Anything else there?
Double A is, hold on. Okay, and double B, okay, we're down through double B?
Yes, so now we're sliding up so that we're looking at, hopefully, double A down to double G. Okay, for me, the one contro-
C.
The one controversial one that I had was the double F. Take that X off.
I, I don't know about the, the health assistance. To me, it's not, I don't know whether it's controversial or not, or not, because I could use a little explanation.
You already took that action last year, it's just being implemented.
Okay, all right, so.
Okay, so-
And what was, 35? Oh, 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 okay, that's right, 36, double lined.
It's, yeah, it's double lined. So, we, board members can get copies of this. Obviously, anything with an X can be changed when we come to our final decisions on the April 28th, but this will give you some guidelines of what we're sort of thinking about as a group.
I mean, we've reached a collective concurrence, so those are not going to be on the list, huh?
No, we are not at all. But no, because it is still on the list, and it is absolutely something that we can put back on again if there is an, an X next to it, in terms of it's something that we decide that we don't want to return.
Would you indulge me? I would like to make a motion that confirms what we just did.
Um, sure.
I make a motion that everything that remains with an X is no, will be considered non-controversial and may be considered non-controversial by staff as it comes back with a new version.
Is there a second for that? And the, the reason I don't want a second is because I don't, I may change my mind, and so I don't want to give that firmer direction.
Just, okay. My conscience is clear.
Yes. Any other comments on it? Mr. Herron?
What, what, Dr. Noel, what do you mean by that? What, what was the-
I think we're violating the Brown Act.
Okay, that, that's what I want to know, because if you-
And, and by, but by voting, we're not violating the Brown Act, it's that simple. We're taking an action, we're reaching a collective concurrence without taking a formal vote in public. And I believe that's a violation of the Brown Act. Simple correction, take a vote.
Mrs. Cordero?
If you don't like the wording of it and want to make it more flexible, I just came up with it off the top of my head.
I, it may be that, that you're doing something different than what at least I perceive that I'm doing, which is, you may be reaching a, a decision. I'm just, I'm not. I'm saying, I, these seem to be likely ones at this point, tally them up and let's see what we have. It'll come back to us again. When it comes back to me again, I may not think those, I may not still have that opinion, I might change it.
Let's take all the Xs off.
So, I don't think that, I, I'm not, I'm not reaching a conclusion. I'm just trying to organize things so that I have a better handle on them.
All right. Uh, Mr. Herron?
Can we just take the Xs off, and so we haven't, we just, this was just conversation?
Well, even with the Xs, Mr. Herron, it's still conversation. We, this is not remotely any sort of final decision. And, Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I just wanted to say one other thing, too. We know some of these costs are not very exact. I mean, some of them are things we're, we're hoping we might be able to, you know, to realize financially, but, but some of the things we know are, are very vague really in terms of absolute numbers. So, I think that puts less of definitive stamp on it.
Yes, Mr. Herron?
Dr. Sarvis, one of our board members has said this is a violation of the Brown Act. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't believe it is, although I will say that the, the board does have the right to act on a conference item. And I believe that's what Dr. Noel is suggesting. If we want to take action, then let's take action and be done with it. I hear other board members saying, you know, this gets, gives us some idea, but they want to be able to change their minds, so they don't want to vote on it.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that if this does not result in any action by staff, then it's on violation.
Right.
But if it results in a, in a, a list which now has things that are reduced in probability or removed, that seems to me to be an action, and that's why I'm raising this issue.
Right, and, but we will get the exact same list, although maybe there will be an addition to it, Dr. Noel.
We won't even reprioritize it.
Thank you.
What was your motion, Dr. Noel? What was your motion?
Oh, I don't think.
What was the original motion?
I'll have to reinvent it. I'll have to reinvent it.
It, it was, um-
That, that, that we, that the board, uh, considers non-controversial, all items with an X, and that expects staff to reflect the, that view in its subsequent iteration. Words to that effect.
Any further discussion on that? At this point, we will move on. Dr. Sarvis, you wanted to make a few comments?
May I comment? I need to repeat why these items are shown here. They were items that came to us, they came to us, we put them on the list, you know, we didn't, we didn't try to pass judgment on them and say, oh, that's a dumb idea, we're not going to put that on the list, so we included all ideas. There wasn't any targeting of programs per se, and, and I heard that comment from, from some parents that we were targeting Gate or targeting other programs. They were simply ideas that we received so that we put them on the list. One of the things that many of the board members have commented on is San Marcos, and there's a big chunk of money involved here. San Marcos, to their credit, came forward last year and, and offered a resolution that moved us toward parity. We welcomed that resolution, and I know that, that from the standpoint of class sizes at San Marcos, that was an item that was, an item considered in negotiations. It would have been in bad faith for us to, to go to the staff during negotiations and, and take on some conversation about class sizes, but I do think there's an alternative here, and it may have to do with class size, but it may not. And I think that alternative is to simply decide that we would staff the school at the same proportional level as the other high schools. In other words, that we would provide the same amount of staffing at the school that we would provide for either the other two high schools, assuming that their, their projection, their enrollment projection was, I think, 1,803 students, and that's not including special education students. And by taking that to the school, we could let the school make the good decisions about how they could satisfy the contract, how they could satisfy the state requirements on minimum minutes that need to be provided to students. And in doing so, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be subjecting some, some overlay of, well, we think you need to change your schedule, I mean, that has never been an issue, or we think you need to go to a certain class size, that was one alternative, but that's not the only alternative. In our work with San Marcos staff in the past, they've shown themselves to be bright and, and problem-solving people, and, and I would opt to meet directly with the San Marcos staff. I would invite Lane Wheeler to meet with us so that if there are any contractual issues that might be surfaced, then they could work with those issues, but I would like to take that on right away. And I would have quite a bit of confidence that, that the San Marcos staff could help us resolve this and move the school closer to parity.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, I think that was a very important statement.
Mr. Herron?
In light of Dr. Noel's concerns, I would like to make the motion that the X's in column B are purely conceptual, conceptual and subject to further consideration.
Well, that's the opposite and, the opposite motion, which might work, is there a second on that?
I will second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes 4-1, with Mrs. Cordero, I assume, is a no or an abstention?
I'm abstaining.
All right, Mrs. Cordero abstained on that one. Okay, lots more to work to do on this for staff, so thank you so much for the hard work that you're, you're doing on it. And we'll get back to this again in two weeks. We do have a special meeting next week, but it is, has nothing to do with the budget, it's strictly board policies. And we will be meeting here to talk about the budget on April 28th. We are now going to item G, returning to consent items designated for discussion. And the first on that list was D-10, Dr. Noel?
Yes, yes, I'm rushing, I'm trying to find, trying to find. Couple of questions. Well, one question, one, one question, one observation. This Kinder, Kinder Music Instructor for $1,750 general fund. That's under consultants?
Kathy Hayden.
Down about the middle of the first page. My question is simply, I, I don't quite understand why sometimes we'll see site funds, sometimes we'll see the general fund as though, and, and I don't see, the question, I guess, is why isn't the site funds, because it's a school?
Uh, Dr. Robertson, I don't know if you can address that one, or Mrs. Swasky?
Repeat your question again, Dr. Noel, I found where you were talking about.
I, I think I can address it, because actually Homeschool Santa Barbara has no other funding source than unrestricted revenue limit dollars that it generates through independent state.
The money they generate goes to directly to the general fund and the costs come right out of the general fund?
That's correct.
That's, that answers that question. I would, I would like to simply call attention to the fact that, that Mr. Hilton and Mr. Nargi are consultants, and this, this indicates that they are being paid. And I bring, I raise that because I sat in on a meeting once where there was confusion as to whether they were district employees and had been recruited through the employment process, or whether they were consultants, and I think it was important to note that they're consultants, and this makes that very clear. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt.
Oh, no, she spoke on that.
D-10.
Move to approve.
All the D items are just public comment. Sorry, there's a move from, motion from Dr. Noel.
Second.
Second from Mrs. Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0, next on the list is D-11, Dr. Noel.
I, I have a, a number of concerns about this job description, enough that I'm wondering whether we have time to, to pull this so I could submit them in writing.
Okay, let's go, well, actually, I shouldn't just say, okay, I should ask Dr. Robertson and Dr. Sarvis, can we pull this?
Well, may I ask, as with any of these items, if we can get your questions or concerns, and hopefully in advance of a meeting, if we can get those concerns, we'd be happy to address them and bring this back to a later meeting, sure.
I'd be happy to do it, you know, about tomorrow or the next day.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so D-11 is being pulled, next is-
Literally.
D-12.
Oh, just, it may be too late to change this, but in the third paragraph, it says if the districts receive IDEA funds, and, and I gather that means only if, and it would just be a lot clearer if the word only were in there.
This, this is D-12, which is the, the Article 5 Health Welfare Benefits tentative agreement.
But it's already been signed.
It's already been signed and it-
Yeah, that, that's why I'm wondering if, if, it's too late, but.
I, I think that it's pretty clear.
I took a formal logic course once, and I've never outgrown it, and, and.
I, I, I think you, I think you get to the same conclusion because it says if the district receives an increase, so it's not just if, it's an if-then question.
Okay.
But that is the intent. That is the intent.
Yeah, okay, well.
It's an if-then statement.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Then there was D-16, which we all tried to pull here. The, I pulled this on my part as opposed to the district staff's part, just because it, I wanted a little clarification about the fees. There are no fees attached to this, and I know that the civic center use permits, well, the civic center use fee structure doesn't actually really include blacktop, but I know that this is something that I think that we're all really eager to have go forward, that is a real public benefit to the community, and so I'm hoping that, that you're working on fees in a way that, I, I mean, I assume that it's going to be, have to be completely negotiated because we don't have it. Is it something that you want added to the civic center use fees, especially since it's something that we're working on?
Good point.
Well, I, I think that's one of the reasons we pulled it, is because traditionally the farmer's market hasn't been paying fees at their other locations, so basically this is the fly in the ointment here, and we need to go back and, and basically address this. And, you know, right now, I'm locked into the fee schedule unless the board directs me to do something else, so if the board's directing us to do something else, I, I need to know that.
Would, yes, Mrs. Deacon?
Sorry, is there not something analogous, like a playing field, I mean, that would equate to the blacktop?
Are, typically, we rent parking lots for $150 a day, plus a $25 application fee for non-student use. If you add up the non-student use or adult use for an asphalt play court for a full day, it would be about the same money. We'd also discussed internally with staff that you'd be putting vehicles on asphalt that wasn't designed for vehicles, and what are the long-term deferred maintenance effects of that, so we've had that discussion also.
My concern with that is that I know the farmer's market is not something, they don't make a lot of money, and I don't, I think it's really important that we negotiate with them to a point where it can go forward. And if it needs to be part of the civic center use fees list, then we can certainly do that, especially if it's something that we're looking at shortly.
Well, I think you have the latitude in the MOU to basically do something outside of it, but we haven't heard that from the board until this point, so we were reluctant to go forward with anything until we received direction from the board.
Mrs. Deacon?
Historically, I think that use fee has been waived from time to time, so that might be an option as well.
I don't know if you want to come back for a board discussion, rather than-
We would like to move forward in our negotiations with farmer's market. As Eric said, they're not used to paying for any space.
Right.
And in this case, they're bringing out porta-potties, so they're concerned about any fee. We, the, the fee that we had talked about was what we thought would be a usual fee for use of our facilities. I, it would be helpful for us to have board direction on this, whether you want us to waive fees, whether you want us to reduce fees, and for us to go in negotiations and, and simply have us decide, decide what's fair and appropriate is one way to go.
I haven't read our policy, but it's fairly explicit, if I recall, I haven't read it recently.
Yes, this would, this would normally be a $150 parking lot, and would normally, I mean, that, that was the equivalent.
But is the waiver a blanket waiver in your, in your hands, or is that not bound by certain considerations? I, I just don't remember.
Well-
Well, I'm not in the habit of waiving your fees, but there are some times when, for instance, a string, I view a string festival like an honor band and waive the fees, so it really depends on the benefit to the students in the district. This is pretty unusual, I mean, you don't have that direct benefit to students in the district.
Although I think that you could pretty easily tie it into benefiting students, you know, either explicitly or, or not explicitly, but obviously, this is a consent agenda item discussion of the MOU, which does include the fees, so we could give direction now if people would like to do that. Is there some sort of motion for a general direction without putting a, a figure on it that anybody can think of? It would be useful.
Well, I think in light of the fact that it's, it's a nonprofit that doesn't generate much income, and it is a benefit to the school, culture, and community, that I would be in favor of a reduced fee of some kind, definitely.
I, I support that, I agree with Mrs. Deacon.
Okay, is that enough direction? A reduced fee of some kind?
I guess so, I, I, I would just suggest, once we arrive at the reduced, reduced fee of some kind, that that's memorialized in the MOU, because I'm always reluctant, I mean, because Dave's responsible for that area, and I'd like it to basically be under, you know, board authority that we're treating this group separately.
Right, all right, well.
Or differently.
Is some kind 50% in your minds, or?
Well, it's going to depend, I, I think it still needs to be negotiated because it's going to depend on what the farmer's market can do. So.
Well, I, I think the benefit is, is very important, not just in a direct sense, but in terms of community building at that school and making it a centerpiece of the West Side community. I think it's, and the school's on a roll, as far as I'm concerned, they have creative, creative ideas, I do everything to support them.
Mr. Herron?
Does that mean we should waive the fees?
I would.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'll move to waive the fees.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, passes 5-0, we give you a lot of direction. All right, that's all around the MOU.
We'll bring back the MOU with a statement embedded in it saying fees have been waived, or something to that regard.
Could we then, why not move forward at this point and have you approve the MOU with that contingency?
Mr. Hetjung?
Can I ask that you be explicit on the fees and say you want to waive the application and rental fee? You may want to have the option of charging farmer's market back any custodial overtime that's necessary to clean up when the school custodian has to work extra because of the farmer's market.
All right.
Didn't they, they assured us from that rostrum that they'd do all the cleanup and-
They, they-
But if they don't.
They do, but just in case, let's make that clear.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to memorialize that in the MOU so that it's, it's very clear to everybody at the get-go.
All right, so, Mrs. Deacon, your, I'm going to make explicit now that it was just for the, your motion was just for the application and rental fees, and you're-
Right, but that, that if there are janitorial fees, that those would be assessed as appropriately, as appropriate.
And, and Dr. Noel, you're, you're happy with that interpretation of it? Okay.
I'd like to move to approve D-16 with the revisions that we've made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously as well. All right, so with that, we move on to coming, coming events, item H. We've been through those.
Well, just for the record, the superintendent announced a number of upcoming school events earlier in the meeting as part of the superintendent's report, and perhaps, Mr. Herron, we could report that at this point in the minutes?
Yes, and then, item I, board comments and correspondence. Mrs. Cordero?
I have a comment based on the student report that we heard earlier in the meeting, with the report of the cost of the prom tickets being at $70 a person, and I, I think I probably raised this last year as well, but I'm quite concerned about students of low-income families being essentially excluded from graduation activities because of the cost. And so I'd like to make sure that all the high schools and other schools that, I, I don't know of any, the, the other schools having any activities that have costs associated with them, but if they do, but certainly all the high schools are taking steps to ensure that cost does not create a barrier to students being able to participate in graduation activities, the whole range of graduation activities, including prom.
Okay.
We'll get you a board brief to that effect, board brief item.
Mr. Herron?
I'll just mention real quickly, Career Day at Salvaro High School had 2,000-plus students and 200 business people, and from all reports, it was a great career day. Tomorrow, Caesar Chavez will receive a $1,000 check from the governor's office on their governor's fitness program. on their governor's fitness program. 100% of the 255 students have recorded 7,136 active days of physical activity. I mean, I think that's fantastic. And, you know, the, we're going to see the Jeopardy buzzers hopefully next week, or two, yeah, next week. And I'd love to hear from Bob on his trip to Carnegie Hall with the Wind Ensemble.
Dr. Noel?
I'd like to report on my trip to Carnegie Hall.
Okay.
I went, again, the, the second time I've done it, Dr. Sarvis went the last time with the San Marcos Wind Ensemble, Symphony Band, who, and they played in Carnegie Hall. They did a stellar job. It's a very enthusiastic group of kids. There were a number of bands there. And I, and I, on a more somber note, I was very, I was concerned, because ours was the smallest band, the smallest group, very small. That's a big stage, you remember, Ryan, and, and they didn't put much of a dent in it. And it just made me think, and then, for, then, for example, oh my goodness, I forget the name of the high school, but it's in San Diego County, filled the stage. And you have to ask, what is the difference between these very successful music programs and not so, so successful ones? We know some of the answers. It has to do with the whole system. David Holmes has told us many times, we have to support it as an integrated system. And at some point, I'd love to hear more about where we stand on that. We've, with our partial tax, we've got some important pieces in place. I think we hurt the program when we voted to take away credit for marching band in ninth grade. And every, all the music people I talked to say that, that, that didn't help, that hurts. It may not be the single determinant. But I, anyway, I, I would like to see us with a...
I had a great trip.
I had a great trip, but I would like to see us with a more vibrant program at the high schools. Our program is atrophying.
Okay.
Let me just note that we still provide credit, PE credit for marching band.
Alternate. It's five units of alternate.
It's an alternate PE, and that's within, that's within our policy. We compromised on that.
Is that understood out in the field?
I'm sure that is.
Yes, it is. The, the issue is that a lot of those students before were taking it all year, all year round.
Yeah.
And that's, that's probably hurting the program to some extent.
I, I heard from parents, but I don't think they understand.
All right, well, let's not have, get into a discussion on that, but future agenda items.
Perhaps, well, we do have a special board meeting next Tuesday, April 21st, 5:00 at Lacumbra School.
And we all received invitations to get there, actually, at 3:45 for orders and then dinner with the Lacumbra teen cuisine ahead of time, so I'm, I'm hoping that everybody can make that, and we'll see you for dinner before the board meeting at Lacumbra on the 21st. I'm pretty sure that's not okay.
No, no wine, school property.
Mr. Herron?
And I, I know that you will be having on the agenda the intra-district, intra-district policy at some point.
Right.
And so I'd like to make sure my request follows with Mrs. Parker's, where we have a general discussion on intra-district policy.
Okay. And perhaps it would be good to note in our minutes that we publish a, a list of upcoming agenda items in the board brief, so that people reading the minutes would be able to see that. We can do that.
All right. Well, with that, and no further objection, we've come to the end of the agenda. Good night.